Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, October 29, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for guest speakers, please do not turn off your microphones. Our first order of business is rule call. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Ms. Kell Smith.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger, chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. We have one registered speaker, Ikahana Halmakinah.
Reunion today. My title is Chief Ikahana Halmakinah, President of the Grand Inja of the Air Force Confederacy of the American People. Today, in this council, we have an opportunity to send a powerful message to the people attempting to subjugate the American way of life, simply hijacking, hijacking the republic for which it stands, eroding away the Constitution. People all across the financial spectrum are being affected by this administration's corrupt actions and deeds. People in rural America, as well as us in urban America, are feeling the pinch and the burn of massive layoffs, federal furloughs, airlines, transit, housing, the cost of inflation, the cost of food, the through-the-roof, the closing of dozens of schools, banning of books with the critical race here. Health care costs are out of control. Public utilities are constantly being raised. I could go on, but I think you get my point. People don't want to be used as political pawns. Working class Americans want relief from this oppressive administration. And since they elected you to represent their interests, I come to you with their concerns. How will you make provisions for the people who are set to face food insecurity? When that child, whose parents' food stamp were cut, shows up at school home greets, what will you do? Your current policies suggest that the teacher, being a mandated reporter, should call DHS and remove the child from the home and send that child to a foster home. What will you do? If this were to happen, what will you do? What measures are in place to prevent such disparities from happening? This city is on the cusp of putting on a spotlight on this city for entertainment purposes. Well, I hope you are also planning on how you're going to address the thousands of people facing food insecurities right here in a city that has been known to be called the most livable city, the city in which you manage millions of funds for. If not, the people coming to visit this city, America, one of America's most livable cities, will become prey and fall victim to society's most vulnerable population. I urge you to be a maverick, to be proactive, and implement meaningful steps to avoid such travesty. I also want to remind your organization and city council that this is the time, the time is now, to take these meaningful steps.
Thank you very much. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak.
Carlino Giampolo, Panther Hollow. Integrity is spontaneous and habitual honesty. I direct my testimony today to council member Barbara Warwick, who is the public face, voice, and leader of the skateboarders in the skate park in Panther Hollow. On September 3, you helped to organize skateboarders and their supporters to come before city council to give their support for the skate park in Panther Hollow, even though the issue was not on the agenda. The council president then gave you permission to speak to the skateboarders immediately following their remarks, which is not the normal protocol. Similarly, today, you may speak to me within my allotted time, which is also not the normal protocol. I have a question that requires only your integrity and a name for a response. Who authorized the skateboarders to build the skate park in Panther Hollow?
Mr. Giampolo, there will be no interrogatory at this time. You can continue your remarks.
Council member Strasburger, you could give her permission to answer my question.
At this time. Please continue.
Council president gave her permission at that September 3 meeting to speak to the skateboarders directly after their remarks, which is not the normal protocol. You can give council member Barbara Warwick permission to answer that one question. Maybe she wants to answer it. One more time, council member Barbara Warwick. Who authorized the skateboarders to build the skate park in Panther Hollow? Who authorized the skateboarders to build the skate park in Panther Hollow?
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Javon F. Brown. I live in 715 Mercer Street, at the top of Bedford. And I wanted to say to the speaker, he just left, but I give him all the honor and praise for coming down here to deal with you, but also you had a whole room full one time, all speaking against him because of what you did. And he says it's illegal, but you won't even answer him to tell him that he might be wrong. He could be wrong, but you won't answer. And I see you shaking your head when I was saying, yes, she could do something. No, no, no. And you also, I didn't come to talk about you, but I found out that if we sent you an email, you don't even read them. Just you're chief of staff, chief of staff. What kind of representative are you? You're supposed to know what the people are saying. You personally, now, maybe you may tell the chief of staff to go ahead and do whatever, but you are supposed to be the one to read every one that comes. Also, I went in the business yesterday, Mr. President, and he asked me, he said, you come down, you still down there at city council? I said, yeah. He says, he wanted some information about agriculture. I think you want to buy land. And he's saying, well, who should I call to plan? I said, call Mr. Lavelle. He's our representative. He said, he don't answer. He don't answer my calls. He said he called last week. He's not got a call since. See, what I'm saying is then, you're getting $82,000 a year to come two days a week, and you can't keep your mouths shut and talking with each other. And you today, Mr. Coghill, over on the side of the wall, on the phone, talking that we can hear you. But if I sit in the back and say something, Ms. Smith won't tell them to come tell the black sergeant to tell me to be quiet when there was other audiences talking about fist drill. He can't go to the prison meetings, but he can come here with his proclamation to show his face. That's what they were saying. But she tells me, sends somebody to tell me, but in front of everybody, I got, she, oh, Ms. Brown, ah, yeah. You know, but two-faced, backstabbing politicians, politicians who are backstabbing. Now, I have a jar, a jar of pennies. I forgot money I got from the homeless people. I come down because I'm an advocate for children, youth, families, the elderly, and homeless. I have a silver jar that I brought here from when I found all these pennies in the hallway. I seen the chief of police that I told him, there's an Asian cop that's beating the homeless people. He don't put them out. He just beats them, takes their stuff. Now, I'm fussing because they have nobody to speak for them, nobody. And there's a lot of people up in the building. We're getting beat, but we ain't got nobody to speak for us.
Next speaker, please.
Cerise Taylor, the missing child, now known as Special Agent Sunshine. Exodus 3:11 says, Moses said to God, "Who am I that I should go to Pharaoh and bring the children of Israel out of Egypt?" I come before you today to let you know, time is running out for this town, for this country. And if you don't get out in time, you will be destroyed by the Most High God because of the judgment that you all are under. The promise for today is about serving others. Deuteronomy 15:7-8 says, "If there are poor among you in one of the towns of the land the Lord your God is giving you, do not be selfish or greedy toward them, but give freely to them and freely lend them whatever they need, not still whatever they have," Lavelle. Let me ask you this. How are the sex rituals you're having with the mayor right next door before the meetings going? How's that working out for y'all? Does your wife know that you work at night as a woman on North Shore Drive, Lavelle? Do you know what kind of trauma your children will experience when they find out and are teased in school about that? You don't think it'll ever come to light, huh? I promise you it will. That kind of trauma, children don't recover from. They don't. And it's bad because there's no leaders out here to help them with that kind of trauma. Matthew 6:34 says, "Jesus said, 'Do not worry about tomorrow, for tomorrow will worry about itself. Each day has enough trouble of its own." And it does. When other people force it upon you. The wisdom for today comes from Proverbs 14:19. It says, "Evildoers will bow down in the presence of the good, and the wicked at the gates of the righteous." Thank you, Lord, for where I am right here and right now. Dear God, thank you for using me to do your work. Please help me follow your leading and trust you in the process. We don't know God's plan, but trust and believe is for our good. Amen.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is David Tessitore, Banksville area. Last night, when I was speaking with my representative, Tracee Kell Smith, she informed me that most on council aren't familiar at all with me. And so I thought I would show a brief introduction that I would like to show, but I've been told, no, I can't, I can give you the URL. So the URL is at elect-dave.com, elect-dave.com, and this is the first thing on it. It is of the former Allegheny County Chief Executive, Jim Roddy, and it's only brief, it's only twenty-some seconds, in which he's introducing me to you. Only one of you sitting here today have I met with in the past, and that's the president of council, when we were dealing with issues of the police accountability. And I was with BP. So, that said, the...
This man, David Tessitore.
I like David. I like David for this reason. I like David because...
Mr. Tessitore, you can speak to us. We cannot use...
Probably seventy-five percent of the nation.
You cannot use a recording as part of your public comment.
So, over the...
Is that endorsement? No, but he really, he does love the city of Pittsburgh.
I have, I might not, I'm talking for the, I've come for the past two months, and I've spoken about a number of issues. I focused on structural solutions because bad structure impedes and good structure lets people excel. I've talked about the parks, too many cooks spoiling the soup, and how we have ten and a half million dollars going into fund that's not being spent to help them. I've talked about a community advisory team process and how that can help with coordination. I've talked about neighborhood integrated services teams, which allow the individuals providing services to better coordinate. I've talked about the IOP migration to the airport as an official county policy, and how Rapid Rail and the airport could potentially help reverse that migration. And I've talked about how Maglev is likely to rise with, again, with a new turnpike through my district, District 2. Next Tuesday, we'll determine the next council. We will see who is here and whether you, as the future council, take on any of these issues. You know, I really feel that it's important that you pay attention and look at the structural changes that have put City of Pittsburgh in the position it is now. And unfortunately, that's been ignored. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, New Papers, Bill 2373.
Resolution repealing an item in Resolution 771 of 2024, effective date, October 31, 2024, in order to rescind the sale.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? I would like to call Director Gula up to the table to explain this and some of the following bills.
Good morning. Jen Gula, Finance Director and City Treasurer.
Thanks for being here. You can speak to the first one, maybe there are similar reasons, but I'm just curious of the reason why there's so many recisions in a row. So, Liverpool Street is most likely going to be connected to the Esplanade-Trid. So, we're not looking to sell that one. It might be part of a future development. Terrace Street was actually redeemed by the original owner. So, we're canceling that sale and refunding the hand money of the purchaser. And then the Hillcrest property is related to grain infrastructure and stormwater management. So, and I think that came after we had started the sale on that. And so we will have to cancel that sale as well.
Any further questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2373, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2374. Thank you, Director.
Resolution repealing an item in Resolution Number 68 of 2018, effective date, March 1, 2018, in order to rescind the sale.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2374, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2375.
Resolution repealing an item in Resolution Number 780, effective December 29 of 2016, in order to rescind the sale.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2375, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2379.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Foster &amp; Foster Consulting Actuaries, Inc., relating to actuary services for calculating pension benefits at a cost not to exceed $7,000 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2379, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2380.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Andrew Boodoo for a single payment in 2025 in an amount not to exceed $5,000 in full and final settlement of litigation filed with the Commission on Human Relations.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2380, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2381.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable in favor of Dicky McCamey and Chillcoat for one-time legal services rendered for an amount of $50,000 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2381, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2390.
Resolution further amending Resolution 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2024 Community Development Program, and the 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by Decreasing Facility Improvements (Sports Facilities) by $505,769.08 and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $505,769.08."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2390, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion on invoices?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Invoices are approved. That moves us to interdepartmental transfers. Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of interdepartmental transfers, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Transfers are approved. That moves us to P-cards. Is there a motion on P-cards?
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. P-cards are approved. That moves us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Warwick.
Bill 2382, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to commit future 2028, 2029, and 2030 bond funds for the local match of the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant from the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission in an amount not to exceed $1,104,000 for the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure's East Warrington Avenue project.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Warwick?
Yes, so I have a motion to amend. There's an amendment here. It's just to change the dollar amounts.
Is there a second? Discussion on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending Bill 2382, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill is amended. Is there a discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2382 as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2383.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to commit future 2028, 2029, and 2030 bond funds for the local match of the congestion mitigation air quality grant from the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission in an amount not to exceed $1,440,000 to the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure's Murray Avenue project.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
With discussion?
Yeah, so, well, I have a motion to amend. There's also an amendment, same thing for the dollar amounts.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending Bill 2383, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill is amended. Any further discussion on 2383 as amended?
I do have just, just a note from OMB that, that we're going for these two CMAC grants from the SPC, and that the future year commitments are necessary because these awards have, they take a long time. So, so that if awarded, it doesn't become available for a few years. So that's why we have to put the money up front now.
These are great. This is the type of funding that was able to transform the Forbes Avenue Corridor through Carnegie Mellon. It was part of the way that they were able to transform that from like a highway to a complete street. So, I'm glad to see we're going, going after these types of grant funds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving amended Bill 2383, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves, that moves us on to Human Resources Committee, chaired by Councilperson Sharland.
Bill Number 2359, recommitted paper, ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct, Chapter 651, Findings and Policy, 653, Human Relations Commission, and Chapter 659, Unlawful Civil Rights Practices by Simplifying Language to Offer Clarity, Defining Terms Specific to the Enforcement of Anti-Discrimination Provisions Within the City Code and Preserving the Anti-Discrimination Enforcement Power of the City in the Wake of Legal Federal Changes.
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to thank the Law Department for giving us some feedback.
Yeah, and we had a productive meeting between Commission on Human Relations and the Law Department yesterday. There just wasn't enough time to make some of the technical changes that they were, and other, and give a full or picture of the proposed amendments. And a week will give them the time to do that. So we look forward to it.
Thank you for working through it and making sure it's right.
Thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a one-week hold on Bill 2359, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for one week. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Wilson.
Supplemental Papers, Bill 2415, resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to enter into an amended and restated Community Collaboration and Implementation Plan for the Lower Hill redevelopment at no cost to the city.
Is there a motion on behalf of Councilwoman Wilson?
To approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Sure, I can redevelop this one. Members may have called that last week, actually Thursday at 11:59, the Penguins' option to redevelop the Lower Hill expired. There's a community benefits agreement as part of that plan. Given that they're no longer party to that, we have to reauthorize that agreement. And so this allows the mayor to participate in the reauthorization of that agreement. Eventually, we're going to meet with, well, we've been in conversation with both SEA as well as the URA, who are also hoping that will be, eventually be party to it because they are now the landowners and who have control of the development rights.
Further discussion, Councilwoman?
No, I just want to thank council president for your leadership on this. It's unfortunate that, you know, it kind of all fell through, but I have complete confidence that you'll do what's right for the neighborhood going forward. So, and new opportunity arises, you know?
I was going to say, to that point, I actually think this is an exciting opportunity for us because for 20 years, we've had a hockey team have the development rights, 28 acres of prime real estate. They're good at hockey, not so much at development.
I saw that comment. That's a great comment.
But now, it's back in the hands of government. I think we actually have a great opportunity to do some wonderful things.
I agree.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2149, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2150.
But I didn't read 2149 yet.
Pardon me. Pardon me, pardon me, twenty-four fifteen has a, for affirmative recommendation, deferred papers, bill twenty-one forty-nine, ahead of myself.
Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, Zoning Code, Article Five, Use Regulations, Chapter nine eleven, Primary Uses, and Chapter nine twelve, Accessory Uses, and Article Eight, Review and Enforcement, Chapter nine twenty-two, Development Review Procedures, all to amend outdoor retail sales and service primary and accessory uses.
Now, I believe it would be prudent to read twenty-one fifty, um, along with that.
Bill twenty-one fifty, ordinance amending the city code at Title Seven, Business Licensing, Article Three, Sales Businesses, Chapter seven nineteen, Vendors and Peddlers, by repealing Chapter seven nineteen in its entirety and replacing it with the new Chapter seven nineteen to update Pittsburgh's vending program.
Is there a motion?
Motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, they're here, if you want to bring them to the table and talk about why.
Why do it now, if we're going to hold it for two weeks and talk about it again in two weeks?
I'm, I'm open for discussion.
It's your prerogative, Councilman.
Motion to, for discussion. Bring these folks up to the table.
Hello again, you know, you know the routine, introduce yourselves, please.
Andrew Dash, Deputy Director of Department of City Planning.
Melissa Hill, Economic Opportunity Planner, Department of City Planning.
Ryland Seifert, Herb Site Program Manager, Rick Domi.
Monica Bender, Assistant Director of Licensing and Administration, P L I.
Is it me that has the floor, right, don't you? Okay, thank you. Um, well, thank you again for briefing me in the office, it was, uh, very informative. I had a lot of questions and, uh, I, I almost forget some of the questions and some of the answers to the questions, but I do understand the importance of this, I, I, I think it's, um, eventually going to pass, I, I hope so. I, I did have some concerns, I will tell you, from small businesses, and maybe you could clarify that for me right now, as far as my main concerns, and then obviously other members will too. So, when we were talking, um, let me just ask you this, okay? If it passes in its present form, and I'm going to use Brookline Boulevard as an example, because I've gotten some calls from merchants on Brookline Boulevard, brick and mortar merchants, obviously, uh, and if I have a shoe store, let's just say, and a brick and mortar shoe store, and if this passes in its current form, will there be permitted somebody within a hundred feet to set up and kind of just pedal shoes out on the curb in the business district?
There will not, there are competition clauses in the vending ordinance to disallow anyone from being able to locate within a hundred feet.
Hundred feet?
That's correct.
That's right, that's, that's what I'm saying, so, within a hundred feet. So a hundred feet's the length of this room, right, pretty much, so, uh, that's a concern, I will tell you, for, for not only my business, and, and maybe I just didn't think about, like, my small business districts, I was thinking like downtown, I guess, when we were initially talked, um, so I think a lot of small businesses are going to have problems with that, brick and mortar places who, you know, pay taxes and have to do with the upkeep of their building, and whether it's paying rent or, you know, they own it, either way, it's costly. So, so that is going to be an issue for me moving forward, I will tell you, and for my small businesses, and, okay, I already have, I will say, on Broadway Avenue and Beachview, um, somebody sets up shop there every Sunday, I don't even know if they're licensed, they're permitted, I, I really don't know, they don't seem to bother anybody, so, you know, um, but, you know, what's the hap, what's to say, somebody next to a hot dog shop selling hot dogs a hundred feet away, I mean, it, it really does become a competitive, um, situation, and I feel kind of unfair to the brick and mortar, um, places, so, can you elaborate on that, or is that something that you're stuck on?
Maybe somebody else, uh, from the team can confirm, you know, I mean, this is a continuation of the competition clause that exists presently in our vending regulations, so we are not changing that competition clause, uh, you know, at all, and so, I mean.
You mean you could do that now?
Uh, someone, yeah, someone could vend, you know, bring a food truck into a parking space now, and that hundred-foot competition, you know, that, like, that is, that is on the books presently, and we are continuing that competition clause as it, as it is today.
So, not a food truck, say merchandise, same? If I, if I wanted to sell whatever I wanted to up on Brookline Boulevard, I'd pay a hundred and thirty-five dollars for the permit, and as long as I'm within a hundred feet of competitor, I'm fine to set up shop on a city sidewalk?
Uh, that is correct, historically, this limit was five hundred feet, um, however, council changed it to be one hundred feet because of how prohibitive the five hundred feet was, um, and we also have substantial evidence to suggest that someone going into a food truck or food cart, um, is looking for a different experience than the sit-down restaurant, um.
No, I'm sorry, Melissa, but no doubt, when it comes to food, I get that, I'm talking merchandise, you know, watches, say, for instance.
So, the mobile vending license licenses operations for food and other goods, it's not limited to food, so as it currently stands, with, with, uh, a hundred feet separation, somebody could vend clothing out of a mobile vendor, a mobile vend, yeah.
Today.
In a paid parking space.
In a paid parking space.
A metered parking space, correct.
They pay a hundred and thirty-five bucks for.
For a yearly license, yes.
For a yearly license, they, did they also pay for the meter parking for the day?
They would have to pay according to whatever parking authority requires.
What is that a day, I wonder?
Not, I'm not sure, I'm sure it varies.
It varies by, by, you know, across the city, and there's some areas that are dynamic, so.
Yes, so I'd like to see some sort of change here, just to protect the brick and mortar businesses, I know Councilwoman Kail Smith, she was way ahead of the game, and I believe restricted it from being on Grandview Avenue, because that's considered a, what type of district?
Uh, Grandview Avenue is within the Grandview Public Realm District, and so the Grandview Public, it, we, you know, in, in tie, in part of this work, it was, uh, tying the opportunities for vending to the zoning districts where similar types of uses can happen, uh, you know, Grandview Public Realm was listed similarly to our other residential districts, Grandview Public Realm by its nature is primarily residential, and so it is, you know, so vending is excluded from, uh, those districts.
So I've spoken since our discussion to business owners on Brookline Boulevard, a few in Beachview, um, couple on Mount Washington in Councilwoman Kail Smith's district, uh, they are, seem to be protected from, you know, being designated that way, uh, I would like the same, I mean, I would be okay with this legislation if I could protect the people on Brookline Boulevard, Broadway Avenue, and Brownsville Road, but it seems like a stretch.
Think of verbal amendment.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I mean, and in that case, it becomes like, uh, you know, so, anyway, I guess I'd like to, if I have to, by Tuesday, I'd need these, the business districts, I feel, whether their language changes, whether they have the footage changes, I just see problems, I see issues with the small businesses in the small business districts, is mainly what I'm thinking about, at least for my district, so, um, so I'm unsure, uh, you know, I just, um, hesitant now, after our discussion, it all sounded good, I was ready to put a backpack on myself and start vending somewhere, right, but, and, and let me just ask you this, as far as, uh, you know, what if you get ten vendors and take up ten parking spots?
Uh, there are spacing requirements relative to parking as well.
They're still taking up ten parking spots, right, on the very heavily?
And so there are limitations that we created, you know, relative to the spacing of vendors specifically outside of group sites, which group sites have to go through a public process, a public hearing, and be approved by, uh, the Public Art and Civic Design Commission, um, so there would be, for example, in an area like Brookline, there would be an R C O meeting that would happen with, you know, with the R C O prior to there being a public hearing in the city to allow for a group site where people were taking up multiple parking spaces in a row, um, outside of that, there are.
When you say a group site, you mean somebody coming in as a group, trying to sell the same thing up and down the boulevard, or?
If somebody were looking.
Working together, you mean?
If some, if somebody were looking to designate a space where there were, you know, a number of vendors that were operating together, so if we were, you know, I mean, we've had inquiries come from organizations that have wanted to, uh, set something up where they have, you know, a group of food trucks.
Let's just say this, Director, um, twenty unrelated people decide, Brookline Boulevard's a hot little market, I mean, a lot of people walking back and forth, I could see people wanting to spend a hundred and thirty-five bucks, plus the parking for the day, which I don't even, I have no clue what that might be, but, um, I could see, you know, so, so if there's twenty separate vendors that want to get a permit in a parking space, we are going to allot that, we're going to allow that?
Not without a public process, not without a public hearing, not without a public decision, so this would be something that, you know, would go to a development activities meeting with a registered community organization, it would have.
I mean, for each and, each and every individual permit will go in front of the R C O?
Not each individual, but if they were looking to do, if, you know, if, if they were looking to.
I'm talking about separate, twenty separate people, don't even know each other, selling twenty separate things, they could all buy a space, a parking space, basically, rent, lease this parking space to, you know, for their, for their product, whatever they're selling.
No, because they're going to have to be separate from one another, no matter what they're selling, in addition to being separate from any competition.
Oh, so they have to be a hundred feet away from one another, even if they're selling different things?
They will be required to be the distance that is outlined in the program rules and guidelines, um, which is currently, we've discussed fifty feet, um, right now, there is no.
Fifty feet for unre, for?
For unrelated.
For, yeah, a hundred feet for competitive, okay.
And, and right now, there's no spacing requirement in the legislation.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, a lot of this, a lot of this, what you're doing is really good, um, you know, I, again, my, my concern is for my brick and mortar businesses,
Yeah, and, and that was why these protections were, you know, either carried over, you know, or, you know, instituted, if we're, if we're obviously looking at expanded opportunities for vending, we want to be able to protect, and, and we've had focus groups with brick and mortar businesses as well, as well as business districts to try to understand those issues, and if there are, you know, issues that continue, you know, to come up, we're happy to work with you and other members to be able to resolve those, uh, before passage.
We're not allowing anybody on the sidewalk. Just parking space.
On, you know, you, I mean, vendors are allowed on the sidewalk in certain conditions, and Ryland's here, and maybe you can speak to, you know, to some of those, you know, to some of those conditions which get to things like sidewalk with queuing, there are lots of things that, you know, have to happen, and, you know, be able to maintain, uh, clear path, in addition to that, we did give priority to existing storefront businesses if they are looking to do either outdoor dining or outdoor retail, that then, you know, that, even if there is a vendor that is operating in that spot, they will have to be relocated if, if a brick and mortar business wants to then use the sidewalk space, uh, or the parking lane potentially for outdoor dining and retail, am I correct in that?
Yes. So, so Ryland, um, if somebody's leasing, renting, what, however we're going to call it, a parking space, has a permit for that parking space, are they allowed to go up onto the sidewalk, not prohibiting people from passing by, we talked about that, and I understand that completely, but are they still allowed to be on that sidewalk?
So a vendor would be given a permit for a location that's either on the sidewalk or the parking lane, so if they're using the parking lane, their customers might be queuing on the sidewalk, making sure to keep a clear space for pedestrian access, but...
So, so we will issue a permit for on the sidewalk as well?
Yes, only if certain conditions can be met around accessibility, sidewalk space, that sort of thing.
Then they won't have to pay parking, right?
They'd still just have to pay the fee for the license.
Right, so why wouldn't they, why would they mess around with a parking spot, which I don't like them taking up parking spaces, honestly, I mean, it might be two, yeah, got it. So, so there might be two or three on Brookline Boulevard now, I, I fear, my fear is, when this becomes, I don't want to say like the Wild Wild West, but unregulated, I feel, even though I know we're living under those conditions now, I don't feel like it's known, I guess, but when people say, oh, a hundred and thirty-five dollars, I could sell whatever I want on Brookline Boulevard, as long as I'm within a hundred feet of a competing product, right?
Outside of a hundred feet for that, outside of fifty feet from any other vendor, they would have to, like I said, maintain a clear path on the sidewalk, that would mean all of their queuing would have to take place separately from that, you know, like, so people wouldn't have lines and a, and a clear path, um, you know, there, there, you know, which, which does limit, you know, Brookline Boulevard would be an example of a business district where there, there could be the opportunity for that, we've had discussions around things like Shiloh Street, which are ones that couldn't, because the sidewalk widths are so narrow that there's no opportunity to be able to maintain clear path and, and have vending occur in locations like that, so it does vary on the business district, um, as to, as to what the opportunity would be, but there would be some, and, you know, kind of in coordination with Domi, we'd be ensuring that there are, you know, wide enough sidewalk areas for the businesses, for pass-through pedestrians, for, you know, for the natural, you know, kind of, you know, kind of, you know, movement in the business district to occur, uh, on the sidewalk.
But if we're giving them the option between leasing a parking space that they're going to have to pay for, for the day, we're being on our sidewalk, why wouldn't they pick the sidewalk?
Oh, just to clarify, um, different units are only allowed on the sidewalk versus the parking lane, um, you can't drive a truck up onto the, up onto the curb to vend.
No, but you could set up a picnic table there.
Maybe, I mean, I, you know, not, I mean, leave it to maybe.
I mean, like you're no outdoor restaurant, you know, I mean, if you're taking the parking space and we're allowing them on the sidewalk, I.
Well, just to be clear, so they, they have to receive approval of their vending unit or vending vehicle in advance of their licensing, their license being issued, and that's how it stands now, and currently, if they're using the right-of-way, Domi is doing a review of their unit, um, prior to that license being issued, looking at the sidewalk, looking at the street, and then either approving or, um, providing an alternative that would accommodate that type of vending unit or vehicle. But as it stands, yes, somebody could set up a fold-out table on a sidewalk.
Right.
But that's, that's current legislation.
But they would have to have the permit for the, if they wanted to take the parking space and the sidewalk, they would have to have two separate permits?
Um, for, for the proposed legislation, taking up a paid parking space is as simple as paying for that paid parking space.
Right.
Same as current.
Sure.
Um, if they wanted to be permanently there, we would go through a review process, um, which would incorporate Domi, and Domi would review, um, of various things re, related to, the criteria related to that space, um, including spacing likely, um, of other, other vendors that may or may not already exist there, um, existing outdoor retail sales or outdoor dining, um, the, the, um, the speed limit, so various things that Domi would evaluate as the subject matter experts of the right-of-way, so, um, and if Domi, um, decides that, or, um, their an, analysis concludes that it's not a safe or feasible location for somebody to permanently have a motorized vending unit in a parking space, we wouldn't approve that permit, and that would be a separate permit in the proposed legislation.
Doesn't have to be a motorized vehicle for the space, you could just.
In, in the parking lane, yes.
Oh, it does?
Or, or it has to be hauled by a motorized vehicle.
Understood, okay. So, but, okay, back to my question, if I pay for a parking space and I have a food truck, am I allowed, you know Brookline Boulevard, how wide the sidewalks are there, am I allowed to put a picnic table on the sidewalk without an additional fee? Okay, am I allowed to buy another permit to use that sidewalk?
It would go through another review process through Domi, and.
That would require two permits then, Monica?
It would, yes, two permits and a license for the proposed legislation, so we would essentially ask that individual, that business owner, um, to already have an annual vending license, however, that looks in, for the, the new legislation, um, so that they're qualified to vend, and then we would, they would go through the permitting process for, for the use of a specific location, um, like the sole use of that specific location.
And the park on the sidewalk adjoining that, is what I'm thinking, right?
Would be two permits.
Two permits, right, right, okay, um, so my main concern is the brick and mortar, um, you know, uh, businesses feeling like, and, and honestly, I feel like the fee is really cheap, a hundred and thirty-five bucks annually for.
That's, that's something we're reevaluating, so, um, and.
I mean, let's make it hard, I mean, you know, I mean, if they're going to come in as competitors to our brick and mortar, which is the way I see this, or the way my, my business associations are seeing it.
And, and just looking at precedence of the fees, we reduced the fees drastically, I think sometime, sometime in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, I can't remember exactly when it was, um, that predated me, um, but they're, they were a lot higher, and thought that that was a barrier for entry to the program, um, now, we're actually receiving, um, like, positive feedback that even if it's a higher cost, folks would still be interested as long as we have guidelines and clear rules and, uh, you know, compliance standards in place that we can enforce.
Okay.
So, we're looking at all those kind of pieces to this, um, so that the program works successfully, um, and again, looking at the fees, under the proposed legislation, there's a fee for the license, to be a licensed vendor, and then there's also a fee associated with, there'll be a fee associated with the permits that they're looking to obtain in connection with their license.
Right, right.
And I, and I would also note, at least for, uh, the zoning bill component of this, I mean, part of, and, you know, they've spoken, uh, at the City Council Public Hearing and others, you know, we've met with folks like the Brewery Association, that actually having the opportunity for vendors on brick and mortar businesses as something that complements what they do on the private property side. the opportunity for vendors on brick and mortar businesses as something that complements what they do on the private property side, is something that they want to see, and so I think.
Who wants to say that?
Uh, the, we, you know, I mean, testified, you know, the Breweries Association, I'm sorry if I'm getting the name wrong, but, you know, did testify at the city council.
Yeah, I, I understand, some, some.
And I'm saying those are.
Businesses feed off each other, I understand that, but, yeah.
And, well, and it's creating that opportunity on private property as well, for businesses to allow for vending is something that is, you know, that is complimentary to what they are, you know, to what they are doing, so, you know, I think that, you know, I mean, there, there is a part of this that, uh, you know, of these changes that affect that in a way that we received, uh, positive feedback as well.
Sure, um, I haven't gotten any yet in my district yet, but we'll see, so, let me just make sure I'm clear, okay, again, I feel like if, in case I have an influx of vendors that come to Brooklyn Boulevard, and they want, let's say there's thirty different vendors that are applying for a permit on Brooklyn Boulevard, if space, okay, motorized space or cart space, um, each one will have to be fifty feet apart.
If they're, if they're motorized and in a parking space.
At the minimum. So each space, parking space will be fifty feet apart at the very least, and what is the limit to the number, I mean, we have a lot of parking on Brooklyn Boulevard, but, you know, every space is so precious, how many, is, is it the, do we just take the length of it and divide it by that? And, or, I mean, how many licenses or permits would we issue?
Uh, the spacing requirement is the limitation that we have right now, if you think about the parallel park, park, or not parallel, it's kind of angled parking on Brooklyn Boulevard, I mean, those are maybe, um, ten feet in width, and I might be generous, and they might be less than that, so, I mean, you're talking about at least five parking spaces, five parking space width between, you know, where vendors could locate at a minimum, in that, you know, in that case, um.
Right, so, so I guess, you know, I, I like, and the reason why I asked the hold, um, and I think some others did too, is just, um, again, when we talked, you explained it very well, I support it, I supported it, but then when I'm getting feedback from the business districts, I didn't quite think of that at the time, now I do, am, and now I do feel like they have a legitimate point, besides the parking spaces and all that business, again, it really comes down to the brick and mortar in my district, and somebody setting up shop next to somebody who has a very successful business there, but might be undercut or undersold by somebody is only a hundred feet away, a hundred feet away is not that long, I mean, you know, um, it's thirty steps, what it is. So, I think people will make that if they're saving money or getting the same product for, you know, a cheaper price, so. So that, I don't know where we go, I don't know what we can work out, how we could adjust that to protect the business district, the brick and mortar business dis- district, who pay taxes on that building and everything, so, um, whether it's the fee, making it more difficult, or I, I don't know, I guess, but, but I wanted to just kinda take some time and not rush into this and pass it today, for those reasons. Those are my only reasons, I will tell you, okay, it's, it's all about those two or three things, it's a brick and mortar, it's a parking spaces, and, and it's the, you know, kind of, I don't wanna say unruliness, but how many vendors might come to Brooklyn Boulevard and just decide to peddle their product, even though they could do it today, right, Melissa, if they wanted to, right, I just feel like it's not, you know, okay, that, I, I'll stop there, again, thank you for your presentation, you guys did a really great job with it, and, uh, you know, I just hope we could work out these concerns that some of my businesses have, so.
Yeah, I think we're happy to, to work through those, I mean, also can obviously connect to other people that have been involved in the, in the process, and let you know their perspectives, if that's helpful to you, um, you know, and you know, I think, you know, and again, I think one thing that we noted, you know, both at the hearing and when we, when we met, is you know, we're trying to create a lot of clarity in these rules to be able to better enforce, which is one of the things that whether you are a brick and mortar business, whether you are a vendor, um, whether you are our Department of Public Works or a public safety department, you know, that there have been real issues around under the current system and the opportunity to enforce. And we've been trying to, trying to, through li- through the licensing requirements, through the clear opportunities, you know, your clear requirements to you know, to have people post, you know, their permit publicly, to the guidance that we're making sure to be able to provide to those business districts and to those others to be able to, you know, through some of the work that Monica and team have really looked into in different ways to do, you know, kind of more rapid enforcement, uh, you know, of these, really trying to clarify that issue, which I think is where we've, we've heard at least a number of the tensions that have happened, you know, with, um, with vending in our exist, you know, existing in our business districts.
No, Andrew, you all did a really good job at explaining that, and I agree with you, just tightening things up and
Yeah.
regulating things, and more so than anything, I agree with ninety percent of what you, um, were telling me in my office, uh, so I support it, I just, I need to get past this, you know.
And we're happy to continue to work with you.
Thank you, thanks, that's it, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick.
Um, yeah, thanks, yeah, so I, I have not actually heard from anyone in my business district, maybe I'm going to, maybe I'm going to. Um, so, I mean, I will say, just generally speaking, right, when we are talking about, uh, vent, whether it be a food truck, or selling clothes, or selling soaps, or selling, you know, whatever, you know, our farmer's markets, our open-air markets, um, our, you know, the breweries, like, this is a really good opportunity for people growing a small business, right? It is a hu- it's, because brick and mortar is so expensive, so, you know, making it easier for people to kind of be able to, to get that, those kinds of small businesses going, same with sort of share spaces, I know those exist, right, where you can rent a space for a period of time, that, that type of stuff, so, so overall, m- making it easier for folks who, who wanna start a small business to, to do that, I think is good. I, I, I hear what Councilman Coghill said, I mean, it's sort of like the idea, you sort of like picture like a New York City thing, where there's like people, you, you know what I mean, like, like just selling stuff out on the sidewalk. I can't really imagine that in Pittsburgh, like, I don't feel like we're like a big enough city for that, but I mean, I could see, you know, I mean, as far as like shoe, I, my suspicion is that like Amazon and Zappos are a far, far greater threat to like your local shoe store than, than someone, you know, but, but you would need a license to do that in any case, right, so that would be, um, so this would be for a specific parking spot? Right, like if we're talking about a food truck, for example, like they would be renting a specific parking spot?
Well, on, under the current legislation, you can, as a, as a mobile vendor, you can acquire a mobile vending license.
Right.
It allows you to utilize metered parking spaces across the city.
Any, any meter.
Any metered parking space, as long as you pay the meter, and then it's up to the parking authority to enforce that, because that's not under our purview as a license holder, or the license administrator.
Right.
Um, with the new bill, what we're proposing is that we would still allow that similar behavior, right, they would still be able to acquire a, or obtain a license that allows them or permits them to utilize paid parking spaces or metered parking spaces, but now we're, um, we're proposing a limitation where you, there's a fifty-foot gap between vendors, that's, that's the differentiation between it, either way, um, both, both the current and the proposed legislation will allow somebody to utilize paid, like meter parking space.
So this is actually more restrictive on the.
That's the intent, yes.
Where you can par- where you can park your food truck, if, if we're talking about food trucks specifically?
I- in some cases, it's, um, we'll take, I would take some metered parking off the table, um, but would add legal parking spots that aren't necessarily meters, that meet, um, traffic safety and zoning requirements.
Got it, so, I, I do wanna say there's one, because, um, in Greenfield this summer, and this is just sort of for folks, you know, at, um, uh, just someone in the community set up a, and we don't have a lot of restaurants in, we've like one, right, or, I don't know, not even anymore. Anyway, very few, very few restaurants, a couple of, you know, breweries with, with food adjacent, anyway, uh, just one of the residents set up a weekly food truck night, just like in the residential area, and it was wildly popular. I mean wildly popular, like they sold out every truck, like it was, so that kind of thing, you know, Councilwoman was mentioning Ferrywood or whatever, like that, that stuff is actually doable, I think it maybe takes a little organizing from the residents themselves, but, um, I think if this, if this helps that happen more easily, I think that is, um, a good thing, so as far as the licensing for the businesses themselves, so we give that, but I assume the county, like the health department, has to give a license for a food truck, don't they?
So they permit food sales, so food distribution to the public, that's what they permit.
Okay.
We're licensing the activity.
Okay.
So utilizing their food truck, or their motorized vehicle, or their stand, or their push cart, we're licensing that activity in the right-of-way. Um, but if they're selling food, they have additional requirements according to the county, and they have to acquire or obtain a, a food permit from the county.
And do we make sure they have that before they, okay, so you can't just like set up, I don't know, like a cookie table outside your local bakery?
If you're obtaining a license with us, we have, we have, uh, requirements which include, depending on what your, what your unit looks like and what you're selling, um, we have requirements, um, as such, and one is, you know, if you're selling food, um, de- based off of what the, however the county defines those categories of food, um, you have to provide that permit, um, for food sales, as well as a commissary permit, if you are, if you're utilizing a commissary or required to utilize a commissary.
Okay, and could, and I, you maybe answered this already, but just to kind of, so if the business, if, if a given business was particularly worried about someone parking of, of, you know, vending in front of their business, could they rent their parking space for the year?
I mean, and I'm, I'm certain that they could go through parking authority and, and do something, but I, I can't really speak to what parking authority would allow.
Well, no, I mean, through this, like, could they just get the license for their parking spot? I mean, whether they pay the, whether they use it or not is up to them, right?
So we would issue a license which essentially provides the license holder the use of the paid parking spaces, um, as a mobile or roaming vendor, or even the sidewalk space off of the criteria that we would receive and provide, um, from DOMI. Um, if they wanna utilize a specific space permanently, that would be a permit process that we're proposing under the new legislation, and so they would go through a review process with DOMI, and then DOMI would either approve or deny the use of that space as such under a permit.
Could the, could a, a, could a business do that, like if, or at least, like if I had a restaurant, right, could I just say, I would like to, to you know, get the permit for my parking space in front of my restaurant?
They would go through the outdoor retail sales program versus going through the permit program with, with the licensing for PLI.
And is that the same, or what's the cost on that?
So, if a restaurant could get an outdoor dining permit from DOMI, uh, which is a separate process from all of this, um, and that's when they could use their parking lane or their sidewalk for their use, um, I believe they're a hundred dollars a year, I, I would have to look at the fee schedule, how much that permit is, but that's a different process than the vending.
Okay.
That's only for the use of that restaurant.
So also, okay, go ahead.
And as, and as I kind of stated before, if they, if the business wanted to get the outdoor retailer dining, you know, kind of, you know, approval, that would take precedence over a vendor trying to look for that same space, again, you know, the brick and mortar businesses are given priority in that regard to someone trying to look to vend in the same location.
Got it, so, so I, either way, for a hundred, a hundred and fifty buck, I mean, depending, like, you, you could, you could essentially be like, block off your space in front, you could use it, you could maybe.
I, I don't, I think the intention is that we're, if we're giving a permit out to use something, we would want the space to be used, um, but I'm not aware of kind of the specifics of, of whether, what that looks like, if they're just going through like the parking authority to take, um, a meter out of service, I think Ryland can speak more to that.
The parking authority requires that you get a permit from DOMI if you're ever closing out a metered parking space, whether it be for construction, outdoor dining, anything like that, so they don't typically, you know, we don't privatize the right-of-way and allow businesses to claim their parking space like that, just for their own parking, but if they want to use it for something like outdoor dining, that's something that we permit.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm just wondering about the businesses that are, because I get it, right, you have a restaurant, you don't want somebody to park a food truck, you, you know, or right in front of your restaurant, I get it, right, but if there was a way for them to kind of keep that from happening by paying the sa- more or less the same fee, whether it's a different process or not. Anyway, okay, just a thought, um, and, um, let's see, I think, oh yeah, and then they have to post their permit? Like if they, whether it's a food truck or a vendor or whatever, they have to have that permit visible?
So, uh, again, current legislation, current bill, um, the license holders are required to post their license in their, in their vehicle on their cart or on their person, so, for instance, if they're a peddler, um, they're supposed to have their license available in a conspicuous location for any, um, authorized, um, officer or inspector to confirm. So that is, that's, that's the current legislation, um, proposed, it wouldn't be any different, they need to have a, their license or their permit, and their permit, if they have a permit, post con- posted conspicuously, so that we can confirm, and so that the public can confirm that they are indeed licensed and permitted to be there.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I did have one incident, maybe Councilwoman Strasburg remembers of this, like, place on, it was like a barbecue, sort of a funny situation on Forbes Avenue, and it was like, what are they allowed to be here, what, and so that is very helpful, like, if, if, if it's like, you must show that you are allowed to be here, and then if they're not allowed to be here, what, what, what happens then?
So, I think that, that, that goes into the compliance and the enforcement process that we're working on details around. I would say, uh, currently, we, um, the PLI inspectors partner with the police department, if we need to, um, if we need somebody to remove their product and their unit from an unauthorized area, um, or for unauthorized operations. Um, if they have a license and they're operating, um, illegally, or, um, then as the licensing officer within PLI, I can take action on their license, the, the complication is when they're not licensed, so if they're unlicensed, then we definitely have to partner with the police currently to support whatever movement or removal of, of that vendor or that operator.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, certainly that would ma- I mean, just in that one case, there was just confusion all around, because it wasn't clear if they were allowed to be there or not allowed to be there, and what, you know what I mean, so, so that was, um, yeah. Okay, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of a hold or, or whatever's needed, but, uh, I just, thanks, I appreciate the clarifications.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you, um, just a couple of things, I, one, well, I was gonna make a verbal amendment, was, is that okay to do that now, I, I think I, Council President?
Currently, we had a, currently we're, we have a motion to hold for two weeks.
Yeah, but can we, since we're discussing it, can we make the motion, that's all I wanna know, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk, are you?
We didn't, you didn't vote on the motion.
Correct, we're discussing.
You're just discussing, so.
Or discussing the hold.
The hold.
Yeah.
So should I wait until it comes back?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just wanted to be cl- be clear before I do something, but I am gonna make a, an amendment to take out specifically state, no vending on Grandview, Shiloh, Bertha, anywhere from Wyoming to Shaler, and I would think about the other parts of Mount Washington, but they actually do have vendors come on their residential streets for, uh, community events, and that's acceptable? Would that be acceptable coming through?
Those are typically done through special events permits, which are completely separate from the vending legislation, so if somebody's bringing a food truck to do a neighborhood block party, or, you know, or something along those natures, typically they're through the special events permitting process.
And then I, um, and I know that it does say public realm, but the public realm is only half of Grandview, it's not, not the entire part of Grandview, it's not, and the, and the yellow line divides it too. And so, so I wanna be specific, I wanna be very clear, 'cause this doesn't, it used to come back to council for approval, and now it's just going to be your decision, is that correct?
Um.
Who's gonna make that decision, PL and I?
So, for the actual, um, issuance of licenses as a roaming vendor or a mobile vendor, um, they would be able to operate as long as the, the space fits the guidelines that we publish, um, that wouldn't have, um, that wouldn't have a public process or a council process, but that's how it is right now, um, the council.
We did put it in, that, that came to council, and then we put in an exception, and I believe during COVID, and then now I think it's back to.
The, the council process currently, and that, that was an amendment that you, you provided specifically for the li- the legislation, but as it stands right now, the council process is, is involved in stationary vending only.
The one I put in specifically was to keep it out of Grandview.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, just wanna make sure that's clear, 'cause it sounded like I was saying it was okay to not come through council, I would never say that. Um, I think council gives up too much of their power, and they're elected to actually make the tough decisions, and so, I, I, I would never give that up. But I do wanna say that, uh, and then you talk about RCOs, and I, I have my own issues with RCOs in general, um, I don't know one that speaks for the entire community um, in any neighborhood, I do, and I also know that a lot of times, they're also given funding, those organizations are given funding from administrations, from the county, from different places, um, even. are given funding from administrations, from the county, from different places, even, you know, foundations, and sometimes those, those dollars comes with strings attached. So I'm never going to say they speak for my whole community, ever. So, so when you say that they're, they'll be part of this process, nobody even attends their meetings in my district, I mean, for the, a lot of people don't, I should say. So I, I think we have to have a conversation, but I would love to see vending in places like Ferrywood where there's, and I keep telling people this, it's like a gold mine there. They have, you know, the industrial park on one side of Steuben Street, they have one restaurant as Calientes, which people think, at the bottom is Steuben, which people don't realize it's in, in the city of Pittsburgh, they have one restaurant for all those warehouses, Giant Eagle alone has eight hundred, almost eight hundred employees between two warehouses. And across the street near Calientes is also the city of Pittsburgh in Ferrywood, which people don't realize, it actually, it actually borders, I think, three different neighborhoods, three different boroughs, and that's, on that section. And it's Crafton, Ingram, and...
Thornburg.
Thornburg, yeah. So, isn't it crazy? So, and there's a whole industrial section there, and I'm thinking, there, there's one restaurant for all those industrial sections, and now there's a res, a pretty popular residential section in Ferrywood, you know, coming to fruition, we're adding more housing there. So I'm thinking, don't you think somebody would want to make some money there, let me to vend there? I don't understand it. But yet, they go to Big Grandview where there's tons of businesses, either struggling and Shiloh, the reason I do want to put this up for Grandview is because I, I just want to be clear, they have struggled since COVID, and then the Montigny constantly shutting down, and they're struggling, you know, to keep their businesses open. So I don't want to do anything that's going to jeopardize or compromise somebody who is in a brick and mortar, and it, and I do want to help startup businesses, I think it's a great idea to help startup businesses, but there are places and there are things, and there are guidelines, and it's not at the expense of our brick and mortar places, who also pay taxes, a tremendous amount of taxes, to, to be here in the city, and we actually need their help. So they need us, we need them, so I don't want to do anything that's going to jeopardize those brick and mortar businesses. I think we need, I think in Pittsburgh, you know, when I see what happened with the bike lanes down Penn Avenue, it makes me sick. I think it's great to have bike lanes, I think it's great to, to have thought it through better. I think we should have opened up the Tom Murphy Trails that, that are already in existence, and put bike lanes where people, where they already could be connecting off, and not interrupting in businesses or residential areas. But instead, we're acting as if the businesses have absolutely no say in the city of Pittsburgh. And so it's that disrespect for the business community that's really starting to, I, I know, I personally am going to advocate very hard for, for us to make sure we're respectful of the people that are paying the taxes and paying your salaries and ours, so, and that's the residents and the business community. Everybody can listen to other nonprofits, and a lot of people don't necessarily live in the city, I'm going to listen to the people that pay our, pay our salaries in both boroughs. But I, I am going to put something in place to, to put no vending in those areas, I just want to make sure you know that's coming. And I would love to put some, some incentive to vend in places that, that is needed, such as Ferrywood. I would love to do that.
And I would note, I mean, we met with the, you know, one of the Mount Washington business owners, again, after the, after the city council hearing.
You did, and I appreciate it.
Director Bay, Director Bay, you know, went and spent time at, at his, at his place of business.
After he sent that nice letter out.
You know, and...
But go ahead.
And, and, you know, we've, we've met with the, the business owners there, you know, kind of multiple times prior, you know, so, you know, and have gone over with them, you know, the reasons why the regulations that we have in place do not allow for vending on places like Shiloh, do not allow for vending on places like Grandview. The, you know, what we have written does allow for more vending opportunities in places like Ferrywood, which, you know, more than, you know, you know, that do not exist now for people to have, you know, potentially permanent locations for vending, you know, in not only Ferrywood, but other similar industrial or job center districts that don't have a commercial component to them. So this does, this legislation, or the combination of these two pieces of legislation, do allow for that opportunity to take place where, under the present rules, that isn't the case.
Yeah, just in, even in East Carnegie, which actually still has one of the last operational steel mills, and this, within city limits, they, there's nothing around for, they go, they go to Carnegie Borough to support Carnegie Borough businesses, which I love our neighbors, I love Carnegie Borough, I'm getting text messages from Green Tree and Scott Township, and McKees Rock says, I'm sitting here, I love our, I love our boroughs, but I want them to support our city businesses too. So, and I want to give, I want to give incentive for people to move here and to have businesses here and to live here, so I'm willing to work with you on, on whatever, you know, whatever we can do to incentivize some places. Thank you, thank you for your work. I know this is difficult to please all nine districts, it's difficult for us to please one district, so I can't imagine working with all nine of us, so, thank you.
Councilwoman, if you would like to make a verbal amendment, you, you'll have the opportunity to do so before we take final vote on, on this motion to hold.
I'll, I'll put a written amendment in, when it's, you know, I'll, I'll work on it now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Hi, everybody, I appreciate the discussion. I'm also supportive of the hold, I know that this kind of change takes time, and we had this kind of input the first time we changed the vending legislation, which I can't remember what year that was either. And at the time, I had a lot of concerns from some of the businesses in my district. This time, I have not heard, and I have, you know, robust small business district in Bloomfield and in Lawrenceville especially, we do have a lot of support from Lawrenceville Corporation that supports, you know, a thirty block span of small businesses, both restaurants and daytime economy things like dentists and daycares and drugstores and those kinds of more retail shops. But I do know that there were, I've lived through this discussion before with businesses, especially the ones that have been operating for a long time, had concerns. Many of those businesses, you know, have turned over just kind of generationally, and the younger operators, and some of them are very large brick and mortar businesses, restaurant businesses, have a completely different attitude towards food trucks and vending. And so I just wanted to share that, like I know that this is, there's going to be a mixed feedback, even among brick and mortar businesses. And it may be that different, different business districts are different from each other, right? I mean, where we have a lot of nighttime foot traffic on sidewalks, especially like I said in Bloomfield and in Lawrenceville, where there are lots of restaurants closer together, maybe there's less stress around it because it's more like a destination Main Street. So I just wanted to throw that out as a possibility, and one of the things that really comes to mind is from a business owner, when I represented the strip district, who had lived through being a farmer, being a produce vendor, bringing a bricks and mortar restaurant owner, and had just been in this kind of retail business for decades, and he always repeated a phrase, pile them high and watch them fly. And he meant that in terms of foot traffic in a business district or in your own store, that no one stops at a, like at a, a shop where there's nothing on display. And the more you have, the more customers you get. So, you know, if you're selling tomatoes, you pile them as high as you possibly can on the table, you don't leave them in the cases behind you, like you have to have it looking full. And he, when we would talk about these things in terms of a business district, he would say the same thing, that was his philosophy, right? That if you have, the more attraction that you have in a geographic area, the more customers are going to get. So if you run a restaurant, it was his philosophy, he wanted to be near other restaurants. He didn't want to be alone someplace. But again, different businesses definitely have their different business models, I really appreciate having this dialogue with this neighborhood district is really important, and not all neighborhoods are the same. Like I said, I think some of the neighborhood Main Streets that I represent have evolved or changed, and so they may just have a different style, and attracting, you know, a different kind of customer. So I just wanted to throw that out there, as well as the fact that, I've been going back and forth with my staff, and we're pretty sure that we have at least several bricks and mortars that did start out without their own location, they started out as pop-ups. We think one that started out as a food truck, and another one that started off was literally renting a nonprofit community center once a month, and had lines out the door, and that was ten years ago. And now, as a brick and mortar, very popular restaurant, you know, nominated for awards, winning chefs, kind of thing, it's still as a great, this is, I'm thinking about Apteka in, in Bloomfield, if you know the location, it's on Penn Avenue, has consistently lines out the door. It's been a long time since I've been there because it's hard to get into it. So there's both sides to the story. If we don't, if we, we should figure out expanded and clear regulations and rules around vending, because I really do think that it's an important pipeline to creating more businesses who will eventually end up on, hopefully, one of our Main Streets or another. So, thank you, I just wanted to throw that in.
Thank you, Councilperson Charlin.
All right, thank you, thank you all for being here. I recognize that there's three different departments working on this, I'm sure the coordination has been a lot of work, so appreciate you guys all doing that. And I appreciate being briefed on this, I think we've had ample time to kind of discuss this as it comes through, something that I do wish that planning could do more consistently for us when they're bringing things for us like this. I do have a couple of questions, though, specifically as Councilwoman Coghill and Councilwoman War, we're kind of talking through this, all the different types of permits and all the different types of licensing and all the different types of approvals that you have to get, who is it that is supposed to know this? If I want to open up a coffee cart, who is my sherpa through this, through this world?
So, excuse me, if you want to open up a coffee, you mean a coffee shop storefront or a, like, food truck?
I, I think shouldn't it be the same person for both?
Well, it, it's not, because the state licensed, licenses operations for storefronts. And, and we, we are unique as, as a city where we have separate licensing for vending, we don't license storefronts.
So I, I guess what I'm saying, though, is like, how challenging this must be, I can't keep this straight, and I, you know, get, get paid to do this, how challenging it must be to be someone who wants to open up, you know, a taco cart or some, you know, whatever it is, like how difficult that must be to not have someone who's a centralized location to say, this is how you open up X, Y, Z, this is what you're going to need, this is your health department violations, this is your encroachment, whatever it is, like, how do we, how do we possibly expect people to open up businesses in the city of Pittsburgh if we don't have someone whose job it is to make sure that, that they're getting the right permits and they're, they're applying for the right things and paying the right taxes? I mean, like, what a, what a minefield.
And, and I mean, that, that exists across the multiple licenses, dog licenses, you don't get that from, you know, the city.
Yeah.
Gun licenses, you don't get that from the city, business licenses for storefronts, you get that from the state, food, food permits, you get that from the county. So we are kind of segregated in that case, and our, our approach to this has been to try to unify as much as we can related to what we actually oversee, and that is licensing and permitting the use within the city of Pittsburgh for vending and the use of the right of way, or public property now that we're bringing that in as well, and it looks like Andrew wants to say something.
Yeah, and I, I'd just say, through this process, I mean, although you see these three departments represented here, I mean, this is the culmination of lots of conversations with all of the other agencies that oversee aspects of this, and so, you know, part of what we are committed to do that is separate from the work that we're doing to try to bring this legislation and forward to get it passed, is to provide that instruction to new potential vendors, you know, I mean, we talked about it on the enforcement side, but we're also, you know, trying to get, make sure that, that we are giving people the correct information, and that is very clear and open, and I, and, you know, that there's the opportunity to access, you know, that information so they know how to do this, and they know how to make it through this process, and they know what the Health Department regulations are, and they know what the fire regulations are, and they know what, you know, what, you know, like, the locational, you know, you know, requirements around either Domi or PLI or city planning are, so that it is, you know, even though there might be other parts of the process that they have to do before they get into the licensing process or before they get into the zoning process, that it's very, that we're trying to clearly kind of provide the guidance so they know how to do that. And, you know, this is similar to a lot of, you know, I mean, we do and are continuing to try to improve the tutorials and things like that that we give on the private business side, if you're talking about that, and you're talking about, you know, like the zoning and permitting and building process, you know, building permit process, but I think trying to do something very similar here, you know, both, like I said, on the enforcement side as well, on the, like, how do you access this, how do you do this? Because there is a lot of opportunity that we see in vending, I mean, we've talked a lot of, you know, about protections and things like, you know, and enforcement and things like that, but, I mean, you know, as I think Councilwoman Gross had kind of mentioned, I mean, the, the vibrancy is something that, you know, this creates a lot of potential opportunity for the opportunity, and we've had a lot of people who are either vendors or who are in storefronts that have spoken to us through this process, that have talked about the, you know, there being the opportunity through a lower barrier of entry to create the people that are going to be the next people to move into our storefronts, and move into and, and repopulate some of our, you know, our businesses that are struggling a little bit more. You know, we want to be able to create that economic opportunity, so really trying to provide that guidance, you know, as to people, how, how people can do this, is a really important, is just as important for us as the legislative piece, or just as important for us as the enforcement piece.
So if I, going back, if I want to open up a, a coffee cart, who do I, who do I call?
So, so you would come through permits, licenses, and inspections, because the Title, the Title VII legislation is under our administration, so, and as the licensing officer, you would, if there were concerns about it, it would come directly to me. But as a, as a, as the public, you would come to our, either come to our counter with our aptecs, or use our one-stop system online, and you would apply for a license as it is now, so it's the same, it's, it would remain the same.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I just hope that someone could figure that out, I, I truly think like if I'm running, you, you're kind of in, I see this in kind of in two tracks, where like, if I'm doing a smaller operation, I'm probably going to go illegal until I'm, it's enforced, because it seems too complicated to figure out. If I'm trying to, if I'm sinking my life savings into this, I'm probably going to avoid going to Pittsburgh because it's too hard to figure out. Like, I, I worry that we're not, we're not actually creating that, like, that sherpa, that, that, that concierge service to try to explain how on earth we're supposed to walk through this, I mean...
And I think, I want to echo Andrew, like, we, we're working very diligently to create that type of educational piece, so that the public understands and has a, has a clear understanding of that access point, so that they know what, where they're going, what they, what, what is required, and then we're, again, as Andrew mentioned, we're working very closely with other agencies that are responsible for certain aspects of these operations. So the county, working with the county, working with public safety, to, to, to communicate to the public, and internal agencies, external agencies, all stakeholders, what that process looks like, who they need to speak with, and, and what they need.
And in addition to what Monica spoke on, I mean, this was all based off of, you know, a report that we had done collectively, that included talking to a number of cities that had more successful, successful vending programs than the city, and more successful vending operations, and more widespread vending operations than the city had. So this wasn't, I mean, although there was all of this work with other departments and, you know, and, and, you know, that kind of led into what's here in legislation, this was also based in a lot of best practice research and conversations with other cities and their processes. So, I mean, yes, I mean, you know, like, obviously, an individual doesn't know what, you know, may not know what it's like to vend in Philadelphia or, you know, or another city, you know, compared to Pittsburgh, but we did try to make sure to talk to, to work with those other cities, to learn lessons from them as we were trying to craft this program, and I think a lot of that does come into some of those things on the front end that you're mentioning.
Well, I'm always supportive of us learning lessons from other cities, I think it's something we do far too infrequently here. I, I do want to ask, though, so, I, I, again, I've made my point here that I think it's very challenging to figure out how to navigate the system, but also, who knows how to enforce this policy? Who is actually, I, I promise you, if I go to my police zone, if I go to the folks that work on South Side Entertainment Patrol, they have no idea what we're talking about here. I know that they don't know what rules and regulations are in place for food trucks right now, it's something that we've, like, it's always a gray area for that. We, you know, I constantly complain, and I have been complaining, my predecessor has complained about this for, for decades, PLI is like a nine-to-five operation, you can kind of do whatever you want after five, so...
And everybody knows it.
You know, so, whose job is, is to enforce this? Is this, you know... Is this, you know, does this fall on, should, should I, as a council member, you know, start telling people what to do when they're operating at 5:30 on a Friday night? Who's job, who is, whose job it is to let the enforcers know how to enforce?
I mean, I'll let Monica take, I think, most of this. I would, I would, I would note, and I think we can all appreciate that we have actually spoken to, you know, kind of the entertainment district as well as Zone Three, you know, and, and a lot of these discussions. So we've been trying to provide a lot of that clear clarity to, you know, to public safety as, you know, as a part of these conversations. But I'll let, you know, details of enforcement, really, Monica can.
So we, we ident, we've identified that there's a gap in, in understanding how enforcement or compliance standards are enforced. And there's obviously a partnership that we need to have with, with the police in order to support this program. And so what we've committed to, similar to what I was mentioning earlier, is educating the, the stakeholders that are responsible or the administrators that are responsible for the program and sharing that information, being as transparent and clear as possible. And so some of the conversations we've had with public safety is really clearly defining what the, what the rules would be in that partnership. They want to understand, like, how do I know if somebody's a licensed vendor? Well, in the legislation, even as it currently stands, somebody should have a conspicuously posted license. If they don't, then they're actually not following the, the rules associated with this program and they could be removed. Do we ticket them? We could ticket, the, the police could possibly assign a ticket, but that's up to the police. And then as far as, if somebody does have a license and we've identified or we've submitted a complaint, the action on the license could take place currently. But I would have to, we would have to perform an investigation or of that complaint. Whether that is a police report or we're sending out inspectors on like a detail to review that space, that area that was, that we received the complaint from. But that's, that's the, that would be the approach to compliance and enforcement currently. Again, communication of policies, guidelines and clear expectations with the partners is going to ensure that we, we actually success, we successfully perform this program. So, communication.
And, and to follow that, you know, so, I mean, it is with public safety. It's also with Public Works who are primarily in our park spaces. If we're going to open up, I mean, there are vending opportunities in parks presently, but there will be, you know, the intention is that there will be expanded opportunities. You know, if you think about places like our pools that don't have, you know, opportunities for vending, but you have families in a, in a place for some time. It is, and, and so there's like that difference between, I think, you know, the formal enforcement that PLI provides and kind of informal enforcement that, you know, is an opportunity for, you know, whether it's DPW, whether it's Park Rangers, whether it's others, you know, to, and, and we've committed to being able to provide them with a one-pager that, you know, can be handed out to officers or can be handed out to Public Works employees that are, that are, that are in the field. So that if they see these things that, you know, they don't have to remember, right? You know, like, what is a legal vend, you know, like, how do I determine if some things are legal vending operation or not? That there's something that they have with them or, you know, there's something that they can refer to that can tell them what a legal vending operation is or not. Because in some of those informal ways, you know, and we've had, I don't want to speak for Public Works, for example, but, you know, there have been discussions where, you know, all right, well, now there's the opportunity for people to go out and say, "All right, well, do you have a permit? If you don't have a permit, you're not legal and you can't operate here." You know, that, that is maybe not PLI going through an investigation or a ticketing process or an enforcement action. But, you know, can, you know, can do some level of enforcement.
But it's also knowing that you have the right permit. It's like, it's not just show me your permit and they pull up a business license.
Right.
And so, up until this point, that enforcement, or, you know, that communication to the enforcement agencies has not happened. How are we to believe that it will happen after 2025?
I mean, that's, our commitment is a part, a part of really revamping this program. I mean, this program doesn't work if, you know, if, if it's, to your previous question of how people can actually access the program. It doesn't work if, you know, if, if we don't have a way to enforce against bad actors, you know, that might be operating, you know, that wouldn't be operating legally in the system. So, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, those are, but, I mean, obviously, we have to, you know, we have to determine, you know, with you all what those rules specifically are to, to be able to do that.
So, I mean, I had a guy like selling the THC derivatives out of a trunk on East Carson Street. He had a business license and wouldn't show us, wouldn't even allow us to take pictures of the business license. And it took like a full three weeks to have him removed because no one knew whose job it was to have him removed. So like, this is, this is the kind of problem that we've, we've got, that, that we've, we've had. And I just, you know, I would like to believe that it would, it could work better. I just don't really have a whole lot of faith in that yet.
So can I, can I respond to that really quick? So if he is vending out of the back of his car, he's not, he's not holding a business license from us? We, we would not approve. First off, we, we don't currently have legislation that approves the sale of THC. So, and we.
Not THC, sorry, not THC, the derivatives, the.
Okay. But we don't, but we don't have a license that permits that. And also, we, we don't provide licenses for vending out of passenger vehicles. So that, he might have, he might have acquired a peddler's license, but it, but it's likely that he wasn't operating in conformance with that license for, for a couple of things, reasons. One, if he didn't show the officials a license, then he's already non-compliant with a license if he has a license. And he should have just moved along. If he does have a license and he's either selling goods that he didn't specify as a part of his license or he's vending out of a unit that wasn't approved, again, that's non-compliant with his license. He should have moved along. Or the police could have likely done something, I, I can't speak for the police, but.
Yeah, so he should have moved along, but he didn't want to.
Mm-hmm. So that, that, like, as, as the licensing officer, as, uh, uh, under this program, I can take action on a license? If, if we were able to obtain information regarding his license or his personal information by the use of the police, we, we could have taken action on the license and either, you know, did something with the license. Or the police would have had to take action because at that point, that's our, that's our outlet, that's, that's our partnership.
It literally took weeks for, for this person, for that, for that message to get to the police for him to move along.
And so, as a part of this conversation, we're committing to providing guidance and clear expectations across all of our partnerships so that when something like that comes up, there's a, a clear understanding as to what the steps, what steps we need to follow in order to resolve it as quickly as possible.
Okay, um, I, I also want to ask about hours. So, I brought this up when we talked previously. Have we made determination on hours here? This is something really important to me on East Carson Street. You know, we, we have had to, at times voluntarily ask all the businesses to be done, done selling everyone out of your establishment at 2:00 AM. But we've had some resistance because it's all we have, the only power we have is voluntary. So is there anything that you're thinking in terms of saying you can only vend within these hours?
Uh, yes, right now vending can occur between 7:00 AM and midnight in the public right-of-way. The discussion as of now is to, is around 6:00 AM to midnight. You know, to allow more of a breakfast hour for the public right-of-way, but to not determine hours for vending on private property since that's, you know, a little bit of, of, more outside of our, our usual scope. This is something that we have delegated to the rules and regulations, which can be updated at the sign-off of directors of DOME, PLI and DCP in the future. If there were to be an issue, it's something that could be updated pretty nimbly within that framework.
Okay. Thank you. And the only other thing, the current exemptions that we have, things like Shenley Plaza, Market Square, are we planning on keeping those intact or is that your, we're, what are the thoughts on those?
The intention is to relate the places where people can vend to the zoning districts, you know, that we have across the city. You know, so that, you know, that the, the locations of specific zoning districts outline. You know, because before it's in any, you know, paid parking space, you know, we can have food trucks. Well, there are paid parking spaces that are in residential zones, you know, in certain, in certain locations. There are things like that that create, you know, some, some places where people could vend on the current system that we might not want them to. At the same time, you know, there are, you know, whether it's the Ferrywood example given previously or, you know, in some of our other, you know, kind of commercial business districts, you know, the opportunity to think about, you know, kind of, you know, if people are allowed to do kind of similar, you know, similar opportunities, you know, that we'd allow vending in those locations. Melissa, you might want to add to that.
Yes, but for those two specific locations, the default in the new program would be that they are not allowed for vending, but unless there was that public process that, that we discussed. So both any space downtown and any space adjacent to a city park or within a city park would need to go through that public process unless it's already a location that, that is used by vendors.
And we think that the enforcement agents will be able to figure out how something is zoned. You know, we, we think that they'll be able to determine that?
That's the piece where we're committed to, providing, you know, different information, depending on, on the group to, to be able to know that quickly.
And, and we have, we have that information online searchable by address. So, I mean, you know, as a part of guidance, we can provide obviously direction to, you know, how, if that's not already, you know, someone that may have a, you know, that may have a stationary permit, you know, we may think about, you know, the opportunity to be able to add that to it. But, you know, like, somebody who's in a, you know, in a mobile location, you know, again, you know, we do have that information that is, you know, online and searchable, you know, from, you know, any type of device.
I'm just thinking of a police officer, you know, in a, in area in probably somewhat heated conversation, pulling up the zoning map and trying to determine, you know, what is the, the zoning district, you know, for this, for the street here? I, I don't know, I, I, again, I, I think a lot of it has to do with the, the execution and I've, I've got some, some challenges on our ability to do that. So, that's all from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else first round? Okay, I'll say a few things. So it's a lot of what we've talked about already, just some maybe finer points to add or some ideas. Yes, also endlessly sympathetic to brick and mortar businesses. Restaurants are particularly difficult to open and maintain. Brick and mortar businesses are competing with malls, with, you know, shopping online, et cetera, et cetera. So I see that. And I agree that these are some emerging entrepreneurs. And I wonder if we, we heard from some of them at the public hearing. I wonder if we keep in touch with them or who, who is charged with keeping in touch with them to maybe track how many do go from mobile vendors to adding a brick and mortar business or in, in, instead of or in addition to their business, like we've seen with a couple here and there?
I, as it currently stands, I don't know that we're tracking that information. I think it would be valuable to understand that transition, especially in, in relation to the success of this program. So we could look into maintaining some of that information as we pursue the, the program changes.
That would be great. It would be helpful to have that data, maybe working in concert with our Office of Nighttime Economy and, you know, some others. And also, I think it would be helpful, what I'm hearing from some of the business districts is that there's, you know, why would we want to compete with a business district, particularly if it has shuttered and boarded up windows, right? What if we could think, conceive of, and I've talked with Councilperson or Councilwoman Mosley about this, who I know is, is absent today, but does, is, was supportive of a hold so that we could, we could, he could have some time with his business districts as well? Like, a program along with potentially the URA or other entities or even the, the Health Department as well to, to specifically help those who wish to have brick and mortar fill those, those, I don't want to say vacant abandoned, shuttered business, businesses in business corridors. And what would that look like? So, to proactively work to get them from one place to another and, and help everybody. And it also, it strikes me that there's not, like, we don't have to, I think we can, to, to the concerns that we've, we've heard at the table today, I think we can help the brick and mortar business owners without hurting this program, too. Like, we can make it easier to start a business. We can have someone jeopardizing them through the process easier. We can, it'd be great if we could figure out a way for a longtime business owner who's been there for over X number of years to reduce their business taxes. I don't know how legal that is, but like, we can help them, but maybe not at the expense of, 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 of this program as well. And I just think it's so easy for all of us to imagine the worst that could happen. Like, oh, all of a sudden, there's going to be a flea market in X locations. Like, I don't think this legis, I don't feel like this legislation is going to, all of a sudden, people snap their fingers and say, "Oh, this is what I needed to be able to do the thing I wanted to do and line up, you know, food trucks along X corridor." Like, if that was going to happen, it probably would have already happened, is my guess. And we're just trying to clarify what the rules are and, and, and add some clarity and make it actually a little bit more expensive, right, in some cases on the, on the front end. So I, I would hope that if there are specific problems, instead of making the opt-in sort of a case-by-case, which I've heard some business owners say would be the prudent way to go, which is, like, you should, you, you should work with each individual chamber of commerce in each neighborhood to see if they want this. Rather than going in that direction, I would hope we could see how this goes and then troubleshoot as necessary, rate, increase the fee further, increase the buffer, you know, as we've done over the past with the food truck legislation to begin with.
Yeah, and maybe just to respond a little bit to both of your questions, you know, I mean, although we are not kind of doing, as Monica stated, like, we're not, we didn't anticipate doing kind of tracking of who we've talked to and how they move through the system. You know, we have been, Melissa's been very diligent at like being able to collect, you know, information and, and the contacts and kind of being consistent within this process on, you know, the people that have been engaged with us so far. And so I think we can see that kind of moving into the future as we get rules and regulations completed, as we start to get some of these other things, you know, completed as well. And, you know, to your other point, I know this is, these are conversations that I've had with, you know, a number of council members around, you know, the opportunity of, like, how do we make it easier for people to be able to open up in storefronts, especially because of many of the challenges that are there? I know Councilman Lavelle and I have had this conversation in the past, Councilwoman Gross, you know, where, you know, I think Melissa's been on for a year. The vending project has been a, a primary project to first, I think, you know, but we have been talking about that as well. You know, I think want to try to figure out solutions to those problems because they are very important as well. And we, you know, we, we want to have this program be able to, you know, kind of add to vibrancy, to be able to create opportunities in some of these business districts that are struggling. But, you know, we obviously need to be able to help people once they get to that point, you know, to be able to locate in our business districts. We want our business districts to stay strong and, or to be strong in some of the places where, you know, they're, you know, struggling a little bit more because they are such a vital component to kind of our neighborhood fabric and the walkability of, of so much of our neighborhoods. And so it is really important that we, you know, create those opportunities, you know, even if that is, you know, part of that is a little separate from the vending program.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah. And then, no, I appreciate all of that, I think that's right. And then lastly, I really hear the enforcement piece as, as being critical probably in some districts outside of the ones that I represent, but like, that South Side example is wild. It would be really helpful if, as you, as you, as you clarify the enforcement of this and the policies around that, if you could come back to council and present what that looks like, potentially with the appropriate person from public safety so that we're all having that conversation together. And then there's that chain of command down in public safety as well. Now, we know, I mean, maybe it's like a co-response model in some places. Like, PLI is empowered to go with public safety to say, "Nope, we both are experts in our field and here's the answer."
And just in response to that, I want to recognize that our code enforcement assistant director is not here right now. And so I would want to utilize his expertise and, and his voice as well in this, in this conversation. So enforcement is not necessarily under my purview, it is under his. And so I would want him to partner with us, with us on that conversation.
Absolutely, that sounds great.
And we'd definitely be willing to commit to, you know, having that as a, a follow-up.
Great.
You know, as well, to be able to, you know, after these, you know, after the guidance is really, you know, after we have legislation passed, then we can obviously provide, you know, the right guidance, you know, materials. We can share the guidance materials. We can, you know, have the different departments that we've spoken to in this process because we're going to be working on. we're going to be working on how they, those things get enforced once, you know, once they would be passed. Um, so yeah, it's something we can definitely commit to.
I can also add on the, on the note of, you know, maybe there will need to be little changes over time. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about, uh, once we establish this new program, having a periodic and often, uh, looking back and seeing, okay, what are the challenges that are coming up? How are we tracking that? And what changes can we make over time to keep this policy up to date?
Mm-hmm.
And actually, just to keep adding to that, but, you know, to reference back to something that Councilman Charland had asked for, another thing that we had kind of committed to, you know, with what we were receiving as feedback was, you know, the potential that after these regulations are passed to do like a vendor day, um, you know, where there is a time where representatives of all the departments are at the counter at 412, um, you know, as an entry point to be able to help specifically, you know, specifically, you know, for people around vending in these new regulations. Um, so, you know, if they were to be, if they were to be passed, to then be able to provide the necessary assistance, to be able to answer questions, to be able to, you know, have opportunities, to be able to kind of hand that guidance out, you know, to folks and make sure that folks know that where that's, where that's available and accessible.
That's great. And just an idea, maybe we have a, a separate day that is a little different from that, that's more of a, like, like a, like a small business day. Because I think that there are some of those small businesses that have been there for 30, 40 years and they're chugging along and they're fine, but others are really struggling to adapt to the changes that are happening around them and feel very out of control, um, that the changes are outside of their control, this being one of them. And to even just provide, I mean, some will continue to do business as they always have and some might be willing to think about, um, other ways to adapt to the changes that are always going to come their way, whatever it might look like, that aren't necessarily the City of Pittsburgh changes, but just conditions changing, um, because of market forces or whatnot. So, or a pandemic, so.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay, great. Um, any further discussions second round? Councilman Coghill?
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be quick, I promise. Uh, so I'm just thinking after hearing other members' questions, you know, the concerns that I've gotten, the phone calls I've gotten were not necessarily about food trucks and restaurants. Restaurants, I haven't had one restaurant reach out to me and I think there's a reason for that. Restaurants are unique, right? I mean, I love Italian food, but certain Italian restaurants I don't like, certain ones I love. Um, where every product is different in the food business. And I do believe more food trucks will spawn more business for local restaurants if you have a flood of them. Just people busy, right? Um, however, and this is what I want you to take in count when I hope we can make an adjustment in some way. If I'm selling sunglasses, the same sunglasses that the brick and mortar places selling, and if I'm selling them less because I'm only paying a hundred and thirty-five dollars a year for my license, um, you know, well, there's, it's not about whose food's better or whose sunglasses are better, it's about the price. So this is where I feel like the brick and mortar specifically excluding food trucks. I love food trucks. I, I, I want them everywhere. I want them in the parks. Um, I don't find them as competitive because again, everybody's food is different. Um, but if I'm selling watches, same watch for less because you're paying twenty-five hundred dollars in rent for your brick and mortar store and I'm paying a hundred and thirty-five dollars, that's the problem for me. You know what I mean? That's what I'm trying to get around. I don't know how we can or if we can, but, but that's the issue. And it didn't occur to me until we were speaking here that it's not that, it wasn't the restaurants calling me, it was the people selling merchandise and afraid that somebody's going to set up next to them selling that same product, but at a lesser price because their overhead is much less. You don't comment on that at all?
No, I think we get, uh, I mean, I think it's something definitely that we can take back and, and follow up with your office directly, or follow up with your office and any other offices that are interested in having that conversation and talk through what can be done.
Yeah. So, so that's the issue for me. You know that already. The other issue is the parking spaces, just in case, say Brookline Boulevard, I'm going to guess, I'm going to say it's probably four thousand feet long. I'm going to say, uh, we'll say three thousand to be conservative. At three thousand feet, a space at every fifty feet, that's sixty spaces that could potentially be taken up by vendors. That's just on one side. The other side, you know, we're talking over a hundred parking spaces that technically could be, you know, consumed by somebody. And, um, parking's a premium, of course, in all of our business districts, I think. So, uh, so that's another concern of mine. But my biggest concern moving forward is the brick and mortar places that are afraid somebody's going to set up shop because they have left over, less, much less overhead, but sell the same product, when it's only thirty steps away, really. I mean, we say a hundred feet and it sounds like a big distance. It's really not. It's, I, I would make the walk if I'm saving five dollars on the same pair of sunglasses that I was buying at the other place.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I mean, just in addition to that, I mean, given the example that you've, you know, I mean, given the Brookline Boulevard example a few times, I mean, if there are, you know, other locations that members have questions around, just what the applicability of vending, of these regulations would be, we're happy to walk through that, you know, again, because obviously the example I gave of Shiloh Street is very different than Brookline Boulevard and, you know, like, you know, the, the regulations because they are based on how people can use and move through space, right? And how we make sure that we protect the sidewalk width and that we protect, you know, kind of clear path and those kinds of things. You know, we can definitely walk through that if there are any questions or clarifications or places that you want to say, all right, well, what does this mean on my business district on, you know, Stratmore or Brownsville or, you know, because, you know, like, I mean, you know, because especially with varying side, you know, I mean, we don't have consistent sidewalk widths in our business districts and that is going to change where there are opportunities to vend, as well as where there are not going to be opportunities to vend under what we've proposed, as well as any, you know, future amendments.
And, and this proposal will allow anywhere there's metered parking, whether it's in the residential area or not, no?
No, presently, yeah, it's, sorry, Melissa, I think you were going to speak.
Oh, I was going to say, so presently, any metered parking that's not in a residential area is, is on the table. But this, since this ties it to the zoning, um, then the metered parking that's in a residential area generally would not be on the table.
Yeah, they're looking for foot traffic and...
But that would even, that would even actually relate to someplace like Brookline Boulevard where a lot of the zoning on the north side of the block is actually R2, where the south side of the block is local neighborhood commercial and that the local neighborhood commercial area would be a place where vending could occur, but I think the vast majority of the north side of the street would not be eligible.
The one, the exceptions, that would be, um, right in, in front of agriculture use, community center, parks and recreation, a couple of other uses that are specifically listed out. But we can look at any specific cases that come to mind.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, just to reiterate my main problem, you know, my main, you know, to, it's parking spaces, which I don't feel like that's going to be a big problem. It's this, somebody setting up next to a, a brick and mortar and underselling or undercutting them in the sales. That's, that's my main concern. Same product, not food, you know. Um, I really don't think food trucks would be a problem for my district, but, um, and one last thing to Councilman Charland's, uh, concerns, knockoff products, you know, so say somebody has a license, has, and they're selling sweatshirts, clothing. Um, but next thing you know, they have our seal on it, City of Pittsburgh, or the NFL, uh, seal, which is, you know, not allowed, not permitted without our consent. Um, that is where we'll revert to our partnership with the police and be like, you're not allowed to sell this product here, right? And because we're not, you're not going to go there, I'm not going to go there and throw them off and say this is not permitted. So we have to rely to a certain degree, if somebody is selling fake Adidas shoes, um, somebody's going to go tell them, you have to move along and it's not permitted, right?
That's a, that's a really good question. We don't currently regulate the, the legitimacy of a product. So I, and I'm not certain of the laws around that. I think that would be helpful to understand. And that's likely something that we would need to rely on the pub, like Public Safety to support. Um, so I, it's definitely something we can look into, but I'm just not familiar enough with knockoff products.
But you know, obviously, you go to New York City and, you know, everything's a knockoff. You know, who's good on any alley? And, uh, you could buy any brand. Doesn't, it's not condoned and consented with the maker or the product maker, but, you know, uh, happens and will likely happen here as well. Anybody who does a little bit of graphic designing could put a Nike symbol or any type of symbol they want on any sweatshirt and pass it as authentic, so. Okay, um, that's all from me. I think we'll get there, I really do. Um, I just hope we could work out my main problem with the brick and mortar somehow, some way.
Like I said, we're happy to convene after this and talk through that and follow up with your office.
Well, I'm really glad we talked about it today because I feel like, you know, we all got our concerns out in the open, rather than you running around to different offices and us having to coordinate with each other. And so, so it's all good with me. Um, if we could get that brick and mortar, I don't know, I don't have the answer to that. I don't have a suggestion for you on that. I'm just trying to throw out what my concern is, that's all. So, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Warbeck.
Yeah, sorry, this is, this is like every...
I told you we should have held it.
Well, you know, with that, I might sort of, the, it sounds like there's appetite for a hold. Um, I think too, just in this enforcement route, I mean, it seems to me that when it comes to enforcement, this, it, it could actually be very helpful to have a clear, specific, regardless of what they're selling, regardless of the vehicle that they're selling it in, regardless of, right, that there is a very clear, this is from the City of Pittsburgh, that you are allowed to vend here, regardless of anything else, whether it's food or this or that, so that there is one very clear thing that says you are either allowed to be here, and if you don't have that, then you are not allowed to be here. Um, but I would say, you know, and as far as, I, I think it would be worthwhile before we kind of roll this out is if this team does connect with law enforcement and talk about what does the, what should the enforcement look like? Because, you know, we've had cases, I know there was, um, a, a small business owner, um, in, uh, in Hazelwood who has a truck and was vending, I can't remember where it was, and someone called, it was like a whole thing on social media, somebody called the police and the police, now luckily the police were like, this is not, like, we're not, you know, we're not going to, anyway. So what do the police do? Because I don't want to, especially in this age of like ICE and, and, you know, and all this stuff, I don't, I don't want to see the police like throwing vendors to the ground, I, you know what I mean? People just trying to like, but at the same time, what is it that they do, right? Is there a ticket? Is it like, you five hundred dollar ticket? But what does that look like ahead of time? So that, you know, if you are out, and especially with the NFL draft, I think that's a really good, it hadn't even occurred to me, that's of course, uh, you know, important because we have lots of people who are like, doing all this work to, to be approved vendors around the draft. And so, you know, when you have folks that haven't done that. Um, so I think that would be a worthwhile thing to do before this gets rolled out. And I don't know if that would necessarily be part of the legislation, but at least to have some kind of commitment or framework from the Bureau of Police and then I'd all, maybe, yeah.
So just to respond to that, we have had multiple conversations with Public Safety, different zones, as Andrew mentioned, um, and have talked through some of those details, but we haven't solidified anything yet. And we have ongoing conversations a, around enforcement and are committed to, again, as I mentioned, uh, when responding to Councilman Charland, Charland, um, committed to communication and education and clear expectations of how we're partnering and what, what we would be doing when we're, when we're performing enforcement and compliance.
Yeah, because I mean, a PLI citation, isn't it, right? We know that, right? On the weekend at night, whatever, it's not a nine to five thing. It's going to have to be somebody who's available.
And, and the history of this program has been, uh, a need for a partnership with Public Safety.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So the motion on the table is a two-week hold and Councilwoman Kail Smith, you're not planning on introducing voice amendments today, verbal amendments today? Okay, great. So, um, we have a motion to hold Bill 2149 and 2150 for two weeks. Um, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bills will be held. Thank you for your time, everyone. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to new papers, Bill 2376.
Resolution for the amending Resolution 924 of 2024, effective December 18th of 2024, as amended and titled, resolution adopting and approving the 2025 capital budget, the proposed 2025 community development program, and a 2025 through 2030 capital improvement program, so as to grant five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to specific public service grant projects and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Are we going to talk about these grants at all? Can we have someone to the table? Good afternoon, everyone. Could you introduce yourselves for the public, please?
Kelly Russell, Assistant Director, Community Development.
AJ Stevens, Program Supervisor, Community Development.
Blake Mullnax, Program Coordinator, Community Development.
Michael Knight, Fiscal and Contracting Supervisor for Community Development.
Thank you. Could you give us a little update on this? What, could you give us some background on this?
All right. Well, the amendment that, the yellow one, that's for the ESG. Unfortunately, we just made a mistake.
When you say ESGs?
Emergency, sorry, I got, I got you, sorry. Emergency Solutions Grants. Uh, those grants deal with those who are at risk of being homeless or being homeless. Uh, that is a program we cooperate with Allegheny County. Unfortunately, we, uh, transposed a four and a three. So that's why we have the amendment there for that one.
Okay.
I believe the bill in question also dealt with the public service grants for the five hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, I see.
That's the, uh, your allocations for the different non, for the non-council districts, fifty thousand apiece, and then the hundred thousand dollars for the mayor's office as well, to the various nonprofits who do, uh, community work on behalf of the city.
Do we have a list of this? Or just these ones here?
Uh, that was, once again, that, that bill right there is the amendment, uh, the actual, is it within the legislation?
It should be within the legislation.
But these are all your selections. These are the public service.
I know, but we have different rules and different guidelines we follow for, at different offices. So, I mean, I want to know that they're, everyone's following the same rules I follow.
In terms of eligibility?
In terms of, I was told that we have to have a certain amount. I was told that we have to have 501(c)(3)'s, nonprofit stats, and then I found out that there are others getting it that weren't. So if you want me to pull those all up, I'll have it all ready and I'll hold this bill till next week.
Um, we can pull it all up. I will say with the public service grant, everyone does have a 501(c)(3). Everyone does have the...
Currently, they do. So that was told out last year too, and they didn't. So, and I have that information. You know, I have the emails back and forth to you.
But I'm trying to think, who wasn't a 501(c), because that's actually a rule we check to make sure everything is in.
Yeah, you changed it. You changed it. You changed it and you didn't put it forward after I questioned it. But I'm just saying, there were different guidelines, different rules that different people followed. And so my office followed a more stringent rule than some of the others.
Okay. I'm not going to argue with the councilwoman.
No, I, well, if you want to argue, I'll make a motion to hold the bill and I have a post agenda and bring it all forward, if you want me to. Motion to hold.
I have no problem with that.
So we have a motion to hold for, um, how many weeks is your preference, Councilwoman?
Second, Anthony.
A motion to hold for...
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. Is there discussion on the hold? Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I'm working with, um, you know, Kelly and his team. And I just want, what's the, I just want to make sure I understand what we need to get information for.
The information is, I want to make sure that we're following all the same rules, that there's not special ones for different offices, or different, different parts of the hall. Because last year, we had a, we had one, I went down and met with you, you were there, and I went down and met with you, and they, there was, my office was told that we had to have 501(c)(3)'s, they had to do this, they had to do that. But then there was a group that they were funding that didn't have any of that.
Like a homeless shelter?
No.
No, she's talking about the public service grants there.
No, political.
Okay, yeah, this, this one, this one's for, um, like the...
If I could just stop in, um, we are, we're currently talking about one bill, um, while there are many bills, we did not read them all together. So just wanted to clarify that.
I know you all want to move this, but I'm going to have somebody come to the table and pretend they didn't want part of a conversation that we had a conversation about.
We are discussing only Bill 2376. So if your, if your wish is to hold, um, the bill that refers to the ESG grants, that is not the bill that you would want to hold. I just wanted to be clear about that. We did not read all the bills together. We started answering questions about future bills to be, um, to be considered, but we don't.
I want to put all their bills down, check everything.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware.
Okay, if you want to move it forward, I'm going to, I'll move it today, but I'm going to be, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to bring that stuff to the table, just so people know. I'm going to put all the emails, all the texts, everything out so people know what it was.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're, because this bill, I understand what you're talking, I think I understand what you're talking about. Are, will that be under the neighborhood economic development ones? Because those are like, like neighborhood groups and stuff.
Yeah, I don't remember which one it was, but we had a conversation. Yeah, I don't remember which one it was, but we had a conversation.
So, yeah, that's definitely, yeah.
And Kim was with me at the meeting too, so it wasn't just like, I just had a meeting by myself.
No, I believe you, I just want to make sure that...
Now you remember?
Now, I remember, okay, two different grants, that's, okay.
Yeah, that's what I want to make sure.
Yeah, okay, yes.
As long as you remember, I don't want you to try to look like I was crazy when I'm trying to tell you about something. So, what I want to make sure is that whatever we do, what I want to make sure is whatever we're doing, that we're all following the same rules and same guidelines. That's it.
All, well, I'm, sorry, you go first. Yeah. So, you know, in particular, the ones that are, you know, deal with the, like, the, these are the, 76 is the E, the public service grants. I have that legislation pulled up, I can read off all the different grants. Yeah, who were the, please read off those grants. Yeah, all right, come on.
I just want to note, Councilwoman Kail Smith still has the floor, so.
And I do, I do want to say, one more thing, there was also that we weren't allowed to use conduits, and you were allowing some people to use conduits last year.
Ooh, no, no, no.
So this year, there's no conduits.
No, no, no.
Okay. That was the other thing that was happening.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good for you.
Councilman Wilson?
Oh, thanks, sorry, I don't know how I got turned around. How many, how many groups are there on 76? Okay, don't, don't, just can you read the top three?
The top three.
Just so I can get an understanding on who's on the list.
This is mostly gonna be the mayor's office, I just want to say that too, the way I'm reading the legislation. So it's the mayor's office, is the Bootneys Community, the Bootneys Community Association of Pittsburgh for $10,000, Cafe Momentum Pittsburgh for $10,000, Community Empowerment Association, $10,000, those were the top three. Do you want me to keep, is that what you meant when you?
This has the list.
Yeah, I can.
Hold on, I want to ask this one question. Does this have the list of the ones that council picked as well? Like, is this all combined?
Yes, it's, the mayor's ones are just on top, and then they go down.
As I scroll down the legislation, it gets into the city council.
I understand. Okay, I want to make sure.
Yeah, I do know what I'm talking about. It's okay.
Yeah, well, I just need to make sure, I knew what I was talking about as well, apparently, so, okay, yeah.
Do you want me to keep reading, sir? I'm sorry.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good, sir, whatever.
I'm good. So there's still a motion to hold for two weeks?
Yeah, as long as he's, you know, understood, yes, we did have an issue. And so as long as we're not having that issue this, now, I'm okay.
I don't think we're having that issue with the public service grants.
Before next week and see, but as long as you're...
No, we're good. It's just, public service grants are, while they're all funded from community development block grants, CD, excuse me, the public service grant, PSG, is a different program than Neighborhood Economic Development, NED. So it's, you just, it was a combination of just confusing the two programs.
Would you like to move forward with your motion, or would you like to withdraw? What's your pleasure?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we need a second on a withdrawal?
Yes.
So the motion on the table is to, is a motion to approve. Is there any further discussion on Bill 2376? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2376, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I'll abstain until I go over them myself.
One abstention.
Thank you.
Bill 2377.
Resolution further amending Resolution 924 of 2024, effective December 18th of 2024, as amended and titled, resolution adopting and approving the 2025 capital budget, the proposed 2025 community development program, and a 2025 through 2030 capital improvement program, so as to fund the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank at $200,000, and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2377, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. One abstention. Bill 2378.
Resolution further amending Resolution 924 of 2024, effective December 18th of 2024, as amended and titled, resolution adopting and approving the 2025 capital budget, the proposed 2025 community development program, and a 2025 through 2030 capital improvement program, by increasing CDBG administration by $2,093, decreasing emergency solutions grant by $17,561, decreasing housing opportunities for persons with AIDS by $8,674, and decreasing home investment partnership program by $9,415.36. These changes were made in response to program allocations by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and come at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second with discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, sorry, I apologize, I actually thought this was the bill. Because this one's, I think this one's pretty important, so, this, this bill has an amendment to it. You all have the one, the amendment here, it's 72378, sorry, we almost read the bill. And so I'd like to motion to, but this amendment would correct the amount by $9 on, on one of the items for emergency solutions grant, taking it from 17,561 to 17,570. And so, motion to amend Bill number 2378.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. All those in favor of amending Bill 2378, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill is amended. Discussion on the bill as amended. Councilman Wilson?
No.
Any further discussion on the bill as amended?
No, can I just, I just want to say, I do appreciate working with you, Kelly, I think you're, you know, great to work with. I know that sometimes, you know, between council and administration and different things happen, you're sometimes in the middle of stuff, but I do always appreciate your professionalism, thank you.
Thank you. We're, we're good. Love working with you guys too. We're all good.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of amended Bill 2378, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2386.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with various community-based organizations for the implementation of the 2025 Neighborhood Economic Development Program, and to revive for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $720,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2386, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2387.
Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to provide administration and operating expenses, housing and housing-related supportive services to persons with HIV and AIDS and their families, total costs not to exceed $1,401,162.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, Councilwoman Kail Smith?
No problem. So with the HOPA funding, that, the way the Jewish Healthcare Foundation is selected, that's actually a HUD choice. So we are just a pass-through, the Jewish Healthcare Foundation operates this program on behalf of the city. And what it really does, it helps... No, no, that's fine, that's fine. And what they do is they help those with AIDS and HIV found housing opportunities, just like the grants says.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing, seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2387, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2388.
Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the implementation and administration of the housing counseling program in the amount not to exceed $100,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Councilperson Charland?
Yes, can you tell me what this money goes for, and again, how they were, how they were selected?
Yeah, so with this grant, this is through a direct, direct solicitation of qualified organizations. The Urban League, this grant will help with those who need housing counseling assistance, and I, I wish I could say more simply than that, but really, it's any type of individuals that need, is any type of housing counseling, they go to the Urban League for assistance, the Urban League then charges the city, or we reimburse them for their services, helping city residents with housing services.
So, what do, yeah, like, what, I mean, any type of, like, if I'm looking for an apartment, if I'm fighting with my landlord, if I'm trying to buy a house and I need to make sure that I qualify for a loan, is that...
Those type of housing counseling services, yes, sir.
All, all of those?
As long as they're city residents, yeah.
Okay, so just anything you need related to a house?
Mm-hmm.
For anyone that lives here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you, could you provide us, I guess, what their, their bid came in, you know, or whatever they, whatever? I, I want to see the slate of services that Urban League can provide for housing. Because I, I have to assume there's some caveats on who receives what. You know, I can't imagine, you know, I, I'm just curious, curious what that looks like.
We'll get you that information.
I have their scope up, if you want, so...
Scope is what I was looking for.
Yeah, the housing counseling, it is pursuant to regulations that HUD set out in, yeah, the HUD Housing Counseling Handbook, so they're basically defining exactly what it is. There's tenant counseling, counseling participating families residing in residential housing regarding to their tenant rights, lease conditions, the prevention of eviction, and lead-based paint. Mortgage counseling, participating, providing participating families with mortgage problems help to develop repayment plans and bring delinquent accounts current. Financial capability, providing budget and financial management counseling to participating families to help them meet essential need for food and shelter, resist unwise and unnecessary expenses, and avoid inappropriate access and utilization of credit. Elderly and handicapped, providing housing counseling to the elderly and disabled who have limited financial and physical resources. Fair housing, provide housing counseling to participating families in regard to the rights and remedies of clients under the Fair Housing Act of 1988. Okay, so services are provided at their main office on Fifth Avenue, and they expect with this $100,000, so this is from their 2024 contract, to serve 700 individuals and families with rental assistance, 90 individuals and families with the homeownership workshops and credit repair sessions, and 90 individuals and families with the mortgage counseling to modify the mortgage, take advantage of government programs, or stop a share of sale.
How, how many groups applied for, for this money?
Well, with this one, like I said, this is through a direct solicitation of qualified organizations. So we have been working with the Urban League for quite some time, providing, to have them provide these services.
So, sorry, explain what you mean by direct solicitation.
It is a...
So it's not a competitive bid?
It's not a competitive bid, but it is something we can do through HUD guidelines that we can directly solicit, solicit qualified organizations, that's what.
So we just, we just picked Urban League and said, it's you?
In a roundabout way, that'd be the easiest way to answer your question and say yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Further discussion, Councilman Kail Smith?
Yeah, I just, do they work with other groups and other nonprofits?
The Urban.
With the housing, because I know Action Housing does some of this same kind of work.
Mm, and we...
We had some issue with Action Housing, actually on my street, where they gave somebody a house that they...
Action Housing was one of our main, main, actually, I shouldn't, was one of our, Action Housing was the main recipient of our ERAP funding, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So Action, we do work with Action, but those funds actually ended as of 930, actually, last month, 930, the ERAP funds ended, it was 25.
So I'm gonna be really careful, or really clear, I, because I'm worried, so worried about the budget, I worry about any dime, every penny that we're giving away, every penny that we're doing something with. And when somebody selected for it, I want to know how they're selected, what was, what did the scope of, that you put out, what was the request that you needed, that you needed? What did you put out to say, I need a group to do this? What was in there? What was included in your request?
It wasn't necessarily a request, it was more of, we have just worked... No, I know what you're saying. It's one of those things, we have actually worked with the organization for years, even before my time at the city, so we have just continued, and when we switched a few years ago, we developed that HUD method through the qualified solicitation of direct organizations as a method to make sure that the Urban League could continue to do this work. But I know what you're saying, you would rather proceed, you would rather see the RFP to make sure that organization, that whoever the selected organization that provides these services is, has went through that process and has been selected, more so than just giving the money to Urban League. I feel that's what you're saying.
Well, I think, yeah, I want to make sure that's clear, like, that the public knows how they were selected, and, you know, that doesn't look like it's, especially because there's rumors that the administration might be going there and different things, so I don't want anybody saying that that's why we did something.
No, this is, like I said, I've been in the department since 2013, we've been working with the Urban League long before that, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and I can tell you, I worked with Esther Bush for a lot of years, and I know she's back, but I also know that she's, you know, maybe at a holding place, I don't know, you know what I mean? So I don't want to look like we're doing something that we knew.
There's no funny place, I know what you're saying.
I don't want to look like we're doing something shady, is what I know, I want to make sure we're doing what's right here. And, and how does this money differ from the money that we give to URA for housing and things like that?
Well, the URA has specific programs, this one, just, what did you pull up?
This is their renewal application. I was just going through to see this stuff that we asked them for. The URA, yeah, is doing, they're doing rental gap?
Rental gap assistance, rental gap program, and for-sale development program. So this is, remember, this is just for housing counseling, that the products that are, all the items that AJ listed in the scope that they perform.
Yeah, and can we, can we get a copy of that, you have the scope and everything that you put out to say, you know, this is what you're looking for, so we can, we can have some clarity and understanding ourselves who we need to call for what, because there are so many people, and I keep saying we need a housing department, because there's so many people working on so many different initiatives, it's difficult for us to navigate. I can't even imagine what it's like for the public, you know, so I really want to make sure that when people need help, we know where we're sending them, that they're really getting the help they need. And I also would like to make sure, any dollars that we're giving out, that we're working with groups and talking to them about how they cannot, you know, participate in political activities and do certain things, because I see people come here, almost every month, there's somebody coming here, and they're receiving public dollars, and it looks like we're paying them money to come down here and advocate for somebody's political agenda, instead of us, we're using public dollars for, for politics, and I, I want to be very clear, and I want to make sure we're sending really strong messages, and I want to make sure that we're not telling people, like, when the city planning has a group, or something, legislation they want to pass, or the administration or council, that we're not bringing people down that are receiving dollars, and they're, they come down because they feel like their dollars are tied to that, you know what I mean? So I've had people tell me that they, you know, they feel threatened sometimes, that they're not gonna get their funding or receive funding, so I want to make sure we're sending a very clear example, and very clear message. We're not, we don't want you playing politics with public dollars.
No, and those, there are paragraphs within the contracts, the scope, and I know I might be in the minority.
I mean, urban, I mean, any.
Oh, no, no, I was gonna, I was gonna add to that, I was just gonna say that, besides that, I was gonna say, I'm probably in the minority here, not only do we have to answer to all of you, we have to answer to the federal government, HUD. And then, and things are different right now. There's a new sheriff in town, and just things are not to be played with, is the easiest way I can say that.
Okay. I just, I just, I appreciate it, I appreciate the clarity and the confidence, but I would really like to, and I would like to know, like, how we could work together with some of these groups, not just Urban League, but some of the groups that we're funding, I would like to know how, things that we can expect, you know, and ways we can direct our residents to, you know, obtain some of the help they might need.
We just had that NED conference, and you all want to speak about, we just, last month, we had a NED conference working with some of the groups in the Neighborhood Economic Development Program.
Yeah, so we invited all of the organizations who had an eligible application for the NED program to come for just half a day at the Frick Environmental Center, because they let us do things for free there, because the city owns the property, and it was just a networking opportunity, and we let them raise sort of common issues that they're facing, and just get to meet other people working in the space. And then we also offered the technical assistance along with the capacity building grant.
So we used to have the technical assistance with the Bear Center for Nonprofit Management and CTAC, and CTAC folded, and is the Bear Center still around? Do you know?
I'm not really sure.
So, yeah, we were working, we had a member of the NED committee, was from the Bear Center, and then, yes, this was a couple of years ago, and then she retired, and so we haven't really been in touch with them.
And I would like to say also, that when we're giving this funding out, it should be a way to help lift them through a certain period, it shouldn't be that they depend on this money year after year after year, because then you should be able to give new groups coming in, new groups establishing a little bit of help and a little bit of assistance, but I have, I know there's groups that come for it every single year, and it's like, you shouldn't, your organization shouldn't rely on public dollars to exist, you should be doing your own fundraising.
I'm looking at Michael Knight, because he has a line that he always likes to use when it comes to the public service grants, and he always tells them...
Can he say it?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, Mike.
I mean, our funds are not...
I mean, our funds are not, um, supposed to be used for operational, they're, you know, complimentary funds to help, uh, you know, say thank you for the work that you do, and I mean, I do agree with what you say, that it should be rotated out, um, you know, maybe every two, three years, uh, to be a recipient, but again, that boils, it comes down to the applicants, and then you all's decisions as to who you all decide to fund, who are eligible.
Well, if it were up to me, we'd be giving some of the money back, because I just feel like, I feel like sometimes we're doing, we're giving way too much money out, and we're struggling with our own budget, but, you know, I understand these dollars are going to go somewhere, unless we'll go to our local people. That's it for me, thank you. I, but I would like to have some kind of, like, idea of how we can defer people for help for some of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We're on Bill twenty-three eighty-eight. Councilman Callahan?
Yeah, just real quickly, um, I'm sorry, what was your name?
AJ.
AJ, okay, I was, I, I wasn't here, I, I think, when you introduced yourself, sorry about that. But, um, when you were reading the scope, um, I mean, the way this reads to me is this is for, um, you know, uh, guidance, counseling, this hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, but you had said rental assistance, so is there also monetary to cover, like, a gap in rental assistance in, in this for folks too? Or is it just counseling and guidance?
So I believe, I'm going to double check. Um, I believe that these funds are not going, do, do, do. Yeah, let me pull up their budget. Yeah, okay. So there, these funds are not going directly to the people, so when the rental assistance is listed in there, it's personnel costs for the people who are doing the paperwork for the rental assistance.
Understood. Thank you, AJ. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twenty-three eighty-eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-three eighty-nine.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with agencies to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, and housing relocation and stabilization services, and/or data collection activities, as associated with the two thousand and twenty-five emergency solutions grant funds, at a cost not to exceed one million one hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second with discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Yes, I have an amendment here, as you can see, this is the other amendment with the staple in it. Um, and this one, Kelly, if you could walk us through this, because I'm seeing the same amounts across, like, the-
The contract, man, so-
Yeah, I'm just not understanding, um, I can pull up the email, but I'd rather you just explain.
No, I got you. So this is the one where-
The other one was easy, because it said, I could calculate nine dollars. This one looks like it's the exact same value. All across the board here on three different-
No, it's the staple one.
It's the staple, yeah. I got to get to the second page. Yeah, actually, if you go to Oberly, sir, the second page, that's where the difference is at. But to help, uh, to also answer your question, this is the one where I talked about, we transpose the four into three. And there's where the nine-dollar difference is. So we changed the Oberly amount from four thou- four hundred and ten thousand and five hundred and forty-three dollars to four hundred and ten thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Okay, yeah, it's just hard to see when you look at it quickly. I understand.
Nope, I got you.
And then what about on the front here? Same thing?
Uh, yes.
Four to a three. Okay, four to a three there, and then-
All the other amounts-
Four to a three, okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're fine, I got you.
Oh. It's a good way to explain it.
Yeah.
Yeah, since it's, you look quickly. Looks like the same number, okay. Um, uh, I don't have any questions. I did, as a motion to amend, uh, Bill twenty-three eighty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. All those in favor of amending Bill twenty-three eighty-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill is amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twenty-three eighty-nine as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
That moves us to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee Chair by Councilman Mosley.
Bill twenty-three sixty-seven. Resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh, designating URA as the city's agent for administration of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six Home Investments Partnership Program, at a cost not to exceed one million nine hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-four cents for all council districts.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twenty-three sixty-seven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-three sixty-eight.
Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in, into the publicly owned properties in the eighteenth ward, city of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as block fourteen E, lots eleven and twelve, zero Curtain Avenue, council district number three, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twenty-three sixty-eight, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-three sixty-nine.
Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in, into the publicly owned property in the eighteenth ward, city of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as block fifteen L, lot one ninety-five, one eleven Shelfon Street, council district number three, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twenty-three sixty-nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-three seventy.
Bill twenty-three seventy. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in, into the publicly owned property in the twenty-sixth ward, city of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as block one sixteen G, lot forty-two, three seventy-two Latimer Street, council district number one, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twenty-three seventy, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-three seventy-one.
Bill twenty-three seventy-one. Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in, into the publicly owned property in the twelfth ward, city of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as block one twenty-four P, lot seventy-nine A, sixty-four eleven Meadow Street, council district number nine, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twenty-three seventy-one, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Our final bill of the day, Bill twenty-three seventy-two.
Resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in, into the publicly owned properties in the twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth wards of the city, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, as block forty-seven P, lot forty-three, block forty-seven A, lots one eighty-six and one ninety-nine, block forty-seven E, lot fourteen, block forty-seven G, lot eighty-four, and block forty-seven J, lot three fifty-three, twelve thirty Itney Street, eleven thirty-four and eleven oh eight Fabian Street, nine twenty-one South Side Avenue, one eighty-eight Rockledge Street, and twenty-one oh four Lap Lane, council district number one, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill twenty-three seventy-two, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That concludes our standing committee's agenda. We do have meeting announcements. Next week, due to the general election, council will hold their regular meeting and their standing committee's meeting on Monday, November third, at ten AM and one thirty PM respectively. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline, and you may also call the clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. Is there anything for members? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.